Call order, a meeting for the Normal Town Council for Monday, August 16th, 2021. Please call the roll.
Mayor Koots?
Here.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Here.
Mr. Nord?
Here.
Ms. Smith?
Here.
Ms. Cummings?
Here.
Mr. Preston?
Here.
We'll begin with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge my diligence to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first order of business is public comment, and we have a number of people wishing to speak tonight. Little change because we are spread out. This podium over here will be used for public speaking. That's a little bit of a change, but we're trying to give people a lot of space here tonight. Just to go over the rules, you, I need you to state your name for the record, your address if you're willing, and you have three minutes of public comment. So the first speaker tonight is Kathy Syracuse.
Kathy Syracuse, Walnut Street, Normal, Illinois. And I'm speaking about One Normal Plaza. The neighborhoods around One Normal Plaza are special mix of citizens of all ages and incomes. Many of this neighborhood have spent most of their lives and enjoy the peace and safety of this neighborhood, of the treasure of known as One Normal Plaza. A place where children and families come to learn, play, and grow in a very unique and safe environment of natural beauty and history. This proposed zoning amendment change was specifically constructed to attempt to try to develop One Normal Plaza into something it was never meant to be. Dividing it into four sub-areas is simply creating an avenue to make it easier to suffice a few at the expense of many. We ask that you make the right decision, not for personal, political, or financial reasons, but because you are sitting in this room, elected by people that expect you to make intelligent decisions that are in the best interest of those who will be most affected by those decisions. We are fine with 99% of the proposed changes. The responsible action is to simply change a few words. Make any restaurant or eatery non-alcoholic. Yes, the option of alcohol does currently exist at One Normal Plaza, but the current regulations make it impossible. Why on earth would you consider doing anything that would make it easier to accomplish this? But that is exactly what this zoning change amendment is trying to do. Sometimes there are very good reasons for leaving something alone. This park area was created in 1869 for the protection of children, and 152 years later, it is still a safe haven for children and families. There are other areas much better suited for the type of economic development that we do like to do in the town of Normal, but One Normal Plaza is not one of them.
Our next speaker is Judy Hanks.
Thank you, Mayor Koots, and thank you, members, for allowing me to speak just a second. I moved here 21 years ago, and one of the things-
Ms. Hanks, I know it seems formal, but I need your name for the record.
Oh, I'm sorry. Judy Hanks, 1305 Listmore Lane, Normal, Illinois. And I moved here 21 years ago, and one of the things that drew me to the area that we lived in, which is right there near that subdivision, was the One Plaza. And we loved the beauty and the history that was there with it. I have lots of military people in my family, and so we were very close to what was going on there. And when I found out that there was a possibility that you were going to change the rules so that liquor could be introduced into that area, and I understand that, yeah, there is already a thing where it could be, but they've kind of made it impossible for it to be. And so I'm just here to ask you to please reconsider that and remove that from that part of the rezoning so that there is no alcohol brought into that area. You know, a coffee shop, a ice cream thing, or something that would continue to draw kids and allow them to know they're safe. I grew up in an environment of lots of alcohol, and I know how unsafe alcohol is. So I'm asking you to please reconsider that. No liquor store, no wine store, and no alcohol in any restaurant. Please. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mary Carlisle.
My name is Mary Carlisle. I live at 404 Bray Drive in Normal, mayor and trustees. To you, our elected representatives, I am presenting my thoughts here today in the hope you will do the right thing as you cast your vote tonight and continue to leave the consumption of alcohol out of One Normal Plaza. Please consider the following. What if someone was proposing to put a bar and restaurant in Ironwood subdivision in your backyard? Please have the courage and leadership as a true public servant at this time as you consider this possibility in the backyards of your neighbors who live near One Normal Plaza. Or what if someone was proposing to build a bar and restaurant at the corner of Fallon, Virginia and Normal? Would this establishment disrupt the peacefulness and safety of this neighborhood? I contend that it absolutely would, and I would wholeheartedly support you in your desire to make certain that would not happen. Here's another significant point to consider. It concerns me very much that a bar and restaurant in One Normal Plaza will unquestionably impact the safety and peacefulness of the special needs individuals who live in this neighborhood. They live here expressly for the environment this humble little neighborhood provides. When they moved here, they did so exactly for this reason. What if you had a special needs child and found out a bar and restaurant was going in your backyard? As a parent, you would be understandably concerned for your child's safety and security. I would be as well, and I would gladly support you in ensuring that this would not happen in your neighborhood. In a similar vein, those who buy homes in the vicinity of the airport do so knowing upfront exactly what they are getting. The noise is no surprise because the airport was there first. Likewise, we are already living here knowing that One Normal Plaza is primarily a park for children's activities, home to Mulberry School, Happy Splash's Swim School, The Baby Fold, and residences right on the property. It is at times exactly like this that you are called upon to do the right thing and to vote to not allow a bar and restaurant to open in One Normal Plaza. I'm respectfully asking you to consider this as if it were literally happening in your very own neighborhood or subdivision. A restaurant selling food and alcohol will bring issues of safety with drunk drivers as well as the garbage and odor from the dumpster out back. In addition, there will be an increase in traffic which threatens the safety of children playing, people walking, jogging, and riding bikes. There are countless other uses for this historically significant buildings that business owners would relish the opportunity to consider. With that, I ask that you please respect us and our neighborhood and find a more appropriate location already zoned for this bar and restaurant. Uptown Normal would be the perfect location. Thank you.
Next speaker is F. Luke Funfar. Hopefully, I got that right.
Good evening. I'm Luke Funfar, 914 Chippewa Street. I understand that the town wants to open doors for economic development and business opportunities in One Normal Plaza, but I'm concerned about consequences like noise, pollution, traffic, crime, child endangerment, and loss of surrounding property value that may also enter through those doors. The sale or consumption of alcohol in One Normal Plaza opens the door for all of these consequences into both One Normal Plaza and the surrounding neighborhoods. I urge you to not open that door. Please retain all language in the zoning text that guarantees an alcohol-free One Normal Plaza regardless of the current town liquor code. Also, please amend the proposed zoning text changes to require businesses to close earlier than 10:00 PM on weekdays and 11:00 PM on weekends. These late business hours will disrupt the peacefulness of the area and the sleep of its residents. I urge you to vote as if both you and your families had to live with the consequences of your vote every day and night. If you wouldn't want someone to have the opportunity to open a business that will create litter, traffic, dangerous conditions for children, and late-night noise in your neighborhood, vote accordingly. If you wouldn't want to have to pay taxes for road and infrastructure upgrades to enable these privately owned businesses to open and operate in your neighborhood, vote accordingly. And if you wouldn't want a business to attract crime to your neighborhood, threaten your family's safety, and devalue your property, vote accordingly. I ask you, please, vote with the heart of a public servant, not the heart of a politician. Don't sacrifice the quality of life for many in our community to benefit the business interests of a select few. Vote to keep One Normal Plaza beautiful. Vote to keep it safe for families and children. Vote to protect the peace, safety, and property values of the surrounding neighborhoods. Vote to keep One Normal Plaza dry. Thank you.
Next speaker is Zan Price.
Hello. Thank you, council, and thank you, Mr. Mayor, for allowing me to speak tonight. I did send an email to all of you yesterday.
Zan, again, I'm sorry for the record.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Yeah, the formality, thank you. Zan Elizabeth Price, and I live on Maple Street. At any rate, I sent an email with what I would assume you read as a litany of questions about a lot of things, and the resounding theme really is questions that have to do with adequate research put behind some of these ideas that you have. I don't, I don't see in a proposal where that has been very transparent, and if it does exist, I think you need to make it transparent. So please read that email, and if you could respond to me, that would be great. I recently learned that some of you and some planning commissioners do not live near One Normal Plaza. I imagine that being quite removed from this area makes it easier to see only the positives in the proposal. But I respectfully encourage those of you who don't reside in this neighborhood around the intersection of Beech and Pine to think of how you would feel if this conversation were about areas across the street from you, or around the corner from your home, or adjacent to the field where your children play and learn to ride their bikes. I vehemently oppose approving the current proposal as it is shortsighted and fails to adequately consider how the changes will negatively impact the safety, security, quality of life, and property values of those of us who live near One Normal Plaza. I urge you to deny the proposed text changes and, among other revisions, strike the intent to allow evening and drinking establishments, billiard halls, bowling alleys, and packaged beer, wine, and liquor and retail establishments. These are my concerns. Because the proposal doesn't define parameters for on- and off-premise alcoholic beverage sales, there's a lot of room for error and a lot of room for interpretation. And there's also clearing needed about the often risky "bring your own beverages" BYOB options. Before proceeding with the proposal, I ask that you publicly and comprehensively communicate plans for liquor licenses. This includes proposing a maximum number of licenses that may become available and defining the BYOB guidelines. The proposed hours of operation are not acceptable for establishments that will be in proximity to residential areas. These hours are an invitation for increased noise, traffic, and risk factors that will disrupt the quality of lives well into the night. I ask that the council enlist a third party to provide data that substantiates proposed hours for all business categories that are in the proximity to residential properties and survey residents within at least a mile radius of the center of One Normal Plaza about the proposed hours. The proposal also includes interest in attracting tourists to the stretch of Route 66 near Beech and Pine, but it appears no data exists to validate this name. This is a lofty, and I'm going to say timely to say this, "if you build it, they will come" proposition. And I ask the council to define its quantifiable goals for Route 66 visitor traffic and revenue, share best practices from municipalities that consistently hit goals related to Route 66 traffic and revenue, detailed plans for infrastructural improvements to safely accommodate an alleged influx in visitor traffic. Additionally, I want the proposal to emphasize that One Normal Plaza is intended to house local, independently owned and operated businesses. These proprietors have greater interest than would chain operators in maintaining the integrity of the property and respecting the neighborhood. In closing, I ask that you pause exploration of the proposal and instead take necessary steps to ensure that my input and that of my neighbors shape the intentions for this space. As with taxpaying constituents, our interests need to be your top priority. Thank you.
And our last speaker is Speaker is Carl Seela.
I'm Carl Seela, and I'm a normal guy. Tonight, you're voting on a zoning change to One Normal Plaza. It was sent to you by the Planning Commission chaired by A.J. Zimmerman. At least half of you know very well that A.J. recently ran for town council because he ran against three of you on the stage. I, for one, was impressed with his slogan, "Listen, Learn, Lead," a great motto for government everywhere. But email input for this issue was over 60 to 1 against allowing alcohol in an area dominated by children's activities, a school, a park, a meeting hall that sometimes hosts scout meetings, a pool that hosts a swim team, a community center that hosts kids' dance lessons. Spoken input was similarly one-sided, but A.J. did not follow his slogan. He followed what seems to be the, he followed what seems to be the normal government policy of "listen, learn, ignore." You should represent the people, not the politically connected minority. As best I can tell, in this case, a minority of two. I'm not sure if you're allowed to change the proposed text on the night that you vote on it. If you can, please do so to disallow alcohol. If you can't, then send it back to the Planning Commission to redraft it in the interest of the community, not in the interest of one or two friends of Koots. Please break the trend and vote against this proposal and break the reputation that normal government has, a government whose motto, whether publicly acknowledged or not, has additional small print that A.J. left out. Listen, if you must. Learn, if you can't help it. Then mislead and vote for what you want in the first place. Please vote against the proposed text. Thank you.
That concludes our public comment tonight. There's, I can't allow speaking on-
No, I just, the point of work, there's an update that keeps trying to-
Can you, can you turn your microphone on?
There's an update that keeps trying to push through my computer, and I'll lose my stuff. Can you please? Thanks.
We move to the omnibus agenda. Items that will, considered routine in nature, will be taken with one vote unless a council member would like to pull an item for discussion. Ms. Smith?
Item F, as in Frank?
Mr. Nord?
Item A, B, and D.
Motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Let me make a note here. Items considered under the omnibus tonight are a resolution to award the bid for the Oak Street Water Main Replacement Project, George Gildner Incorporated, at a total cost of $584,791 plus up to a potential $15,000 bonus for early completion. A resolution to accept a bid and award a contract to F&amp;W Lawn Care and Landscaping Company for the Orlando Avenue Tree Planting Project utilizing up to $30,000 in community development block grant funds. A resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a small government enterprise license agreement with the Environmental Systems Research Institute Incorporated for software licensing and related services for the town's GIS system. And a resolution authorizing the execution of an intergovernmental agreement with Illinois State University pertaining to fire protection service. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mr. Nord?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Cummings?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mayor Koots?
Aye. Those items are approved. Item A is approval of the minutes of the regular council meeting of August 2nd, 2021. Mr. Nord?
I saw move.
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Nord?
Thank you. I'd like to amend the minute, the minutes under ordinance for vacating the public right-of-way for Electric Avenue. I'd like them to include that I showed a GIS map showing non-Rivian property owners, and when the town manager and town engineer responded, the response was that all property owners were notified.
I'm not sure what we're trying to accomplish here. We've done this before, and the minutes reference the overview of the meeting, and there is actual tape and video of that, if people want deeper detail on that. Mr. McCarthy?
Sure. Not too many meetings ago, I proposed a nuance in language that Mr. Nord led the opposition to exactly this type of amendment to the, to the meeting minutes, because then the meeting minutes become a political football of who gets to say what in the meeting minutes record, and I think we all agreed to kind of let that die and leave it alone and try to make it not political, what's going on in the meeting minutes, but rather let them reflect what it is. And as the mayor said, there's a video of every word, of every sentence, of every phrase record that anybody can, can look at, so I'd be opposed to that.
No. Mr. Nord?
Yes, the reason that I want to add this is this was a critical piece of information that was given that I based my vote upon. And after the meeting, I sent an email to the town attorney stating that his, that the answer to this question was why I voted the way that I did. And I think it's very important that that be on the record. If it's not, then I hope that this question that I asked is on the minutes for our next meeting.
So we have a motion to approve the minutes, a vote yes as to approve the minutes, as they stand, a vote no. Mr. Dave-
Is there a motion on the floor?
No.
My motion is to amend the minutes to state that I showed a GIS map showing that there were non-Rivian property owners and that the response from staff was that all property owners were notified.
Is there a second to that amendment? Hearing no second, the amendment fails. Please call the roll.
Mr. Nord?
No.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Cummings?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mayor Koots?
Aye. The minutes are approved. Item B is a report to receive and file town of Normal expenditures for payment as of August 11th, 2021. Mr. Nord?
I saw move.
Second.
Mr. Nord?
Thank you. There's a charge for $9,500 for fire training for the Illinois Art Station. This is the second time that we've paid training to the Illinois Art Station for, they were demolishing a house, and we paid them for the fire department to go in and train. When I brought this up before, that was the first time that the town has ever paid a fee, if my memory serves correct. This is the second time, and it's to one entity. Going forward, my question is, is the town going to pay other property owners to allow the fire department to come in and train a similar dollar amount?
That is not a question for this issue. Your original point can be answered, but we're not going to have a discussion on going forward.
Okay, then my question, let me rephrase. What criteria was used to pay this particular entity where others have not?
Well, I believe we shared with council, Mr. Nord, the agreement that, that we entered into with the Illinois Art Station for this particular project. It was an opportunity that doesn't come along very frequently in terms of two residential units on Linden Street that we had an opportunity to do some significant fire training at. So we entered into an agreement with the Illinois Art Station in that the town would pay $9,500 for the demolition of the properties once we concluded our training. So it was a unique opportunity. We felt there was certainly to our advantage to take our firefighters, we had three shifts each occasion, go through each of those structures and do some significant training. So we just felt there was the public value to that.
And that was voted on by council, is that correct?
That is, I don't believe that is correct. It was $9,500.
Right, exactly.
It was within my authority. I did share the agreement with council.
Right. So then my request going forward is that some policy be brought forward that defines the criteria before the town would pay for this, so that way the public doesn't look at this in the future and say, hey, we're just doing this as more of philanthropy instead of a defined reason, so it doesn't look like we're singling out one particular entity over, over another. Thank you.
I can certainly talk with council about that moving forward in terms of identifying value. Certainly, we weigh that with the cost of sending firefighters away to training, and so we felt this was, was worth the initiative. But certainly, I'll take that into consideration and speak with all the council about what that, that particular type of policy would look like.
We'll have this discussion at another point, but the city manager has spending authority up to $25,000 that has been granted to her. So with, with her discretion to do that and having notified us that she was going to do that, I think we're, I think the item is settled. Did you have, Mr. Nord, just a moment, did you have-
Thank you. This would not be the time to discuss this, but I do think a very interesting short presentation would be to hear from our fire department all that they accomplished and learned from that training exercise. I know that they chronicled some of it on social media. I thought it was very interesting and might be worth sharing that with public in a different forum such as this, a point you think appropriate.
Mr. Nord?
Thank you. That was a good point. Since this was something that was within Ms. Reese's spending authority, shouldn't it be under the town manager budget instead of the fire department budget?
We'll have that discussion in other-
I thought it was very interesting and might be worth sharing that with public in a different forum such as this, at a point you think appropriate.
Mr. Nord?
Thank you. That was a good point. Since this was something that was within Ms. Risa's spending authority, shouldn't it be under the town manager budget instead of the fire department budget?
We'll have that discussion another day. Please call the roll.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Cummings?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mr. Nord?
No.
Mayor Kuss?
Aye. The item is approved. Item D is a resolution to award the bid for the College Avenue Water Main Extension Project to start excavating at a total cost of $1,088,330, plus up to a potential $7,500 bonus for early completion. And the Rivian Motor Park Motorway Water Main Extension Project to SNC Construction at a total cost of $951,767.45, plus another up to a potential $7,500 bonus for early completion. Mr. Nord?
I saw move.
Second.
Mr. Nord?
Thank you. When this first came before us, I had asked if there were any requests from businesses that needed additional service or if there are any complaints for quality.
Mr. Nord, the motion on the table is to award a bid. We've had this discussion prior.
And there were no-
Mr. Nord, you're out of order.
Can I rephrase?
If you're going to speak about a bid, yes. Not about the reason we came to the bid.
Has a business come forward and said that we need this now?
Mr. Nord, you're out of order.
I, I guess where I'm, where I'm getting to is this is six months for completion, from time to start to time to complete. We're going to have winter here when all this work is being done, where there's winter-
Mr. Nord, the discussion here is to award a bid or not to award a bid?
Okay, well, I'm trying to ask a question as to why we're doing it over the winter when the costs are higher than waiting until spring when costs are lower.
I'll ask Mr. Burkhardt to, to come forward and respond to that. I can indicate that it's not unusual to get projects started as quickly as possible, but we also are trying to take into consideration the time lag in terms of ordering supplies. Mr. Nord, or Mr. Burkhardt?
Is this on? Yeah. That is correct. We're dealing with large delays in supplies. Getting this project awarded would just speed up the process of it being designed. Typically, it being constructed in the wintertime will not increase the price of it versus springtime construction. If adverse weather sets in, we'll kind of pause that construction until weather's more conducive. But constructing in the wintertime should not cause any sort of price increase or anything like that. Typically, winter projects, we've actually seen some lower pricing because contractors are generally sitting. So it is easier for them to be more competitive with their pricing to keep employees employed versus not having work to do.
That's news to me who's done big projects. You know, winter, winter conditions is something that's, that's a lot. Is there a reason that we have to do it over the winter rather than, rather than delay? Because even-
Point of order. The question was just asked and answered, Mr. Nord.
I'm asking if there's a reason. And also, there's a potential $7,500 bonus for early completion. So is the town going to delay and then cost the contractor that $7,500?
Mr. Nord, the question's been asked and answered.
Can you repeat the answer? Because I didn't get what the reason was why we had to expedite this.
We're asking council to take action tonight, so the contracts can get executed and the supplies can get ordered. There is a time lag to receiving the supplies for the project.
Sure, but construction starts October.
That's anticipated start date based off of the lead times that we've been told for the supplies.
Okay, then, on the construction for this, as I brought up to the council during council comments, the fire hydrants, some of them are going to be 20 feet away from the existing-
Mr. Nord, we're not, we're here to talk about a bid.
This is the first-
Mr. Nord, you're out of order. We're here to talk about a bid. We had this discussion last council meeting. Mr. Nord, we had this discussion. We voted on this item.
We didn't vote on the design. We voted to design it. And now we're voting to approve a design that we've just now seen. I disagree. I would like to appeal the decision of the chair.
I'll give you some leeway.
Okay. There are fire hydrants on the north side of the road that Bloomington has there. We are putting fire hydrants, some 20 feet away from the existing Bloomington fire hydrants. So as residents go down the road, what they are going to see, they're going to see fire hydrants on the north side, both red town of Normal fire hydrants and yellow Bloomington fire hydrants, 20 feet away. That is going to show an unwillingness to collaborate with Bloomington.
Point of order, mayor. This is so far away from the topic at hand. Now we're talking about unwillingness to work with Bloomington when we're trying to talk about a bid.
I'm not going to allow this conversation to go forward because you had this exact same conversation two meetings, or two weeks ago. You brought up the exact issue and it was answered.
That was a council conversation we had.
Is there further discussion on this item?
Point of order. Point of order.
Lorenz? What's your point of order?
I have a point of order. According to Robert's rules, if you say that I'm out of order, after that discussion stops, the floor still comes back to me and I can continue on. So you can't stop me from talking once you give me the floor. You can just call me out of order. I have to change topics.
There was a point of order on the item.
Yes, but that doesn't take away my ability, that doesn't take away-
Parliamentarian?
Me from speaking on the floor.
Mr. Nord is correct that the point of order does not deprive him of the floor until his time has lapsed.
Thank you. So continue, but we're not going to talk about fire hydrants in cooperation with the city of Bloomington.
Okay. This is also going to highlight how overlapping municipalities results in inefficiencies and inefficient use of municipal resources. And I believe this is just another example of retaliation.
Point of order, we're still on that same line. I mean, do you have something different to bring to the table tonight or a different question?
Yes, yes.
Can you get to the question so that we can-
Sure. I believe this is going to be another example of retaliation against Bloomington because of the metro zone collapse.
Point of order, we're still talking about Bloomington. It's not, we're talking about a bid tonight.
Therefore-
Mr. Nord, could you, we have a point, we have a point of order on this issue. It is not, it's not your, a go-ahead, because it's a point of order, it's not a go-ahead on what you're saying. So move on to your next topic.
Okay. I don't support this with the current design.
Fair enough.
So I would like to see this redesigned and brought back to the council, so it eliminates some of these issues that the entire community is going to see when they drive down that road. So thank you.
Further on this item? Ms. Lorenz?
Something, yes. Okay. This was a point of just some interest that I don't think we see very often, and that is splitting this bid across two contractors. Can you describe a little bit why that has happened in this case or in other cases like this? It struck me as unusual, so I'd like to hear more about that.
Yes, it is unusual compared to projects that we've done in the past. The main difference is the sheer size of this project, each one being roughly one mile of pipe. That's a lot of pipe to put in, especially if one contractor would have been awarded that project. And with it being broken into, it's, it's kind of easier, more manageable for, to get multiple bids on as well.
Okay, very good.
And they can work concurrently as well.
Yes.
Okay, okay, very good. As far as the fire hydrants go, those fire hydrants, I think, were put in a long time ago. And I don't know, are they even operational? I mean, that might be something to look into. Thank you.
You caught me there, Mr. McCarthy. Further on this item? Please call the roll.
Ms. Cummings?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mr. Nord?
No.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Kuss?
Aye. The resolution is approved. Item F is a resolution to recognize the McLean County Arts Center as a designated local arts agency for the town of Normal. Ms. Smith?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Smith?
When I asked to have some information and background on this action, I was provided with information that the McLean County Arts Center, although located in Bloomington, does have services it provides to the town of Normal. Could someone please elaborate on what those include?
I can to a limited extent. I, I'm kind of going down the, the information that was provided today by executive director, Mr. Doug Johnson of the McLean County Arts Center. The Arts Center currently has 143 active member households that are residents of Normal. The Arts Center actually is over 100 years old, founded in 1888. They serve more than 30,000 people annually and they, they coordinate various onsite events. They, certainly, one of the things most known for in terms of their partnership with the town of Normal is the Sugar Creek Arts Festival and, which is a juried exhibit, art exhibition. They have a number of classes and the like, so they're, they're very active in the community with a longstanding history. They also have actively provided grant opportunities to, to local partner agencies, partner organizations and the like. So in the last 20 years, they have secured and dispersed 280, more than $280,000 in grants.
I'd like to add to that, because I think it's important to note, the McLean County Arts Center, while it's located in Bloomington, serves equally the city of Bloomington, town of Normal, residents of McLean County. It is, it's not completely accurate to call it a Bloomington organization.
And, and this designation is something that gives an ability to the McLean County Arts Center to pursue some grants. It's not in any way obligating Normal in relationship to something it is required to do with the McLean County's Arts Center. Is that an accurate statement?
That is an accurate statement. I will say, moving forward though, I think McLean County Arts Center will continue to be, partner with us and our cultural arts department on a variety of events and programming and opportunities.
Okay, thank you.
Further on this item? Please call the roll.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mr. Nord?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Cummings?
Aye.
Mayor Kuss?
Aye. The item is approved. That concludes our omnibus agenda. We move to general orders and we've got a list tonight. The first is an ordinance amending the town of Normal zoning code, having to do with the One Normal Plaza PUD.
So moved.
Thank you.
Mayor Kuss, thank you. Since we are, like, like council, staff is trying to spread out and socially distance, I think city clerk, Ms. Honker and I will move off to the side a little bit and I'm going to invite Mr. Trummel and Ms. Davison forward. Their, the only introduction I care to give on this particular agenda item is that this item initiated over a year ago by council. In conversations with staff and council, council supported initiating a zoning text amendment for consideration for the One Normal Plaza planned unit development. I believe the council report, it's all 50 some odd pages of that council report, is pretty thorough and comprehensive. This particular action item for consideration was generated through council's last strategic planning process. And that was in the course of the 2019-2020 goals. And so staff moved forward and progressed on drafting some planned unit development updates. And that's what council initiated over a year ago. Because of the pandemic, it got put on hold. And once the town in the state of Illinois moved in to restore Illinois Phase 5, it was reintroduced through the process and the planning commission held a public hearing on this agenda item and has made a recommendation to council. So that is the introduction on this particular topic and how we got to this point. As mentioned, I'll ask Ms. Davison and Mr. Trummel to come forward and respond to any council questions.
Discussion on this item? Ms. Smith and then Mr. Nord.
Thank you for being here as a resource. I read through the, the minutes of the planning meeting as well as the background information on this. And please stop me and correct anything if I'm making an incorrect statement. In essence, what we're looking at is a zoning, not necessarily a zoning change, but a planning update for the property and subdividing it into four sub areas. The zoning for the One Normal Plaza is currently C1, multi-use office.
I think it's mixed, mixed use, but yeah, it's a C1 PUD.
Okay, and it will continue to be C1, correct?
That's correct.
And under the zoning restrictions for C1, there is no permission to have liquor sales in a C1 zone, correct?
That's correct, although code does permit special event permits within this particular PUD.
And that, just to clarify, that is not in the zoning code. We don't regulate liquor through the zoning code. We regulate it through the liquor code. So that restriction's in the liquor code, not the zoning code, which is not here tonight.
Okay.
So under the liquor code, retail sales are prohibited in a C1 zoning district.
But the, the four areas then, the Sub 1 is the boys' dorms to the north of the multicultural community center. And the only construction permitted in that space will be any of the current owners who wish to add a detached garage if they haven't done so. But there's no open lots for any additional residential housing in that space, correct?
That's correct.
Zone 2 is where the bulk of the buildings are next, including some of the original soldiers' and sailors' structures that have been converted to other uses currently, the Normal Activity Center and the Baby Fold and some other spaces like that. In that space, there's only a few vacant lots currently available that would lend themselves to new development.
One minor correction, the Baby Fold building is in Sub Area 3.
Okay.
But Sub Area 2 has very limited open lots available.
And any development in Sub Area 2 would be subject to the green space restriction and the parket, parking requirement to serve the business, employees, and customers, correct?
That's correct.
So there's not a lot of potential for development in Sub Area 2.
That's correct, unless someone redeveloped a site. Someone could actually tear something down.
And Sub Area 4, I'm skipping 3, has borders Pine Street. And that is normal park property with no plans to develop it and leave it as a park currently, correct?
Yeah, the property directly adjacent to Pine is town park property, except for the house on the west end. But this, there's no development to the park contemplated at the moment, but it's, it's town park space, so, you know, in the future, I don't know.
And we are moving from a, an ability to have some green space, which was what, 20% before? We're now moving to 50 to 60% throughout the site?
Yeah, the PUD right now actually has a minimum of green space of 15%.
So we're actually increasing the green space and we're really only talking about Zone Area 3 that, that has the greatest potential for development?
Well, I guess I would argue that 2 and 3 probably have similar capacities to redevelop.
If somebody were to tear buildings down?
Absolutely.
Okay. And, and the building hours would be limited to 10:00 p.m. weekdays and 11:00 p.m. on the weekends. And the building size would be 5,000 to 20,000 with no provision for drive-through, so there's not any possibility of attracting a fast food restaurant in this space by cutting out drive-through. I'm assuming that that might have been some of the intention in, in including that restriction.
Yes, I mean, a couple, couple different things, certainly- Certainly by restricting drive-throughs, we believe that would much better protect the character of One Normal Plaza. I don't think anyone thinks of One Normal Plaza as being the kind of place where you'd have cars lined up to go through a drive-through, you know, a conventional drive-through. As far as limiting the, the limit of 5,000 square feet only pertains to some of the uses and then the aggregate of 20,000 square feet would apply to those specific uses together. But for example, in Sub Area 2, if someone wanted to build a new office building and redevelop a site, that is an unlimited square footage, so, which is currently the case as well.
But if somebody wanted to get a context of 5,000 square feet, you know, my ranch house, I think, has about 1,500 square feet. If I were to double that, it might give an idea of the footprint, but the limit on square footage also applies to the parking space as well, correct? Or is that separate?
Well, I think what Ms. Davison made mention, there's no limit on, say for example, on office space in Sub Area 2. It is indirectly controlled by maintaining green space and then if there is a desire to provide parking to support that, that also comes into play on the green space.
So that's under the green space restriction, not the 5,000? The 5,000 is a building footprint?
Yes.
Okay, and so if somebody wanted to have the equivalent of that lovely Italian restaurant that used to be in a residential neighborhood in Bloomington?
Benignos.
Which only, only locals knew about it and they kept it quiet because it was such a nice place to eat and I found out about it just as they were retiring. So I lost out on that. That kind of eating establishment could be covered under this, this list of possibilities?
Not that specific use, but potentially that type of footprint.
Okay.
I guess the best analogy I can make is the classic Steak 'n Shake, Chick-fil-A, Red Robin, Fazoli's, you know, any of those generally smaller fast food restaurants have a footprint anywhere from 3 to 5,000 square feet.
But they also live and die on their drive-throughs?
They, yeah.
Okay.
As Ms. Davison mentioned, pretty, any, any national type chain, anything's possible, but any national type chain is going to frown on not having the ability to have a drive-through and not having a fair amount of parking at the front door like we're used to seeing in conventional developments.
And what we're looking at is giving options for economic development so that if there is a desire to grow the area rather than have the buildings go into decay, just increasing the options available to someone who might want to establish a business there?
Yes.
Okay, that's all.
Thank you. Mr. Nord?
Thank you. The vacant lots that Ms. Smith was asking about, who owns those lots?
Um, let's see, I'm looking at the map.
Two of them I know for sure are owned by the town.
Right, I think there's, yeah, the two that...
There's one on what I'll call the east end of Sub Area 2.
Would you put the map up so people can see?
Yes, I think I, I thought I could hit the arrow, but I think I have to do this. I can, but I'm actually not sure how to make this slide advance. Oh, there you go.
There it is.
Arrow the other way, sorry. So that's the overview map. So if you're looking at the vacant lots, I don't know if my cursor will show up there, but Mr. Trummel is correct. It's the vacant lot on the east end of the Loop Drive there, used to be a residence that is town-owned and then the space between the Masonic Lodge and Happy Splashes is town-owned and then there's a lot along Beet Street as well.
So the reason that there hasn't been economic development is because the town owns the vacant lots. If the town would put those up for sale, we can see if the free market will actually develop those. I just wanted to point that out. And then in Sub Area 4, Normandy Village is in Sub Area 4. It's not just normal parks that are down there. So Area 2 and Area 4, the two areas that you're proposing to have wine and liquor sales and eating and drinking establishments, just to be on the same page. Now, what's come before us tonight, I see, what's removed, bowling alleys have been removed. That was something that came up at the Planning Commission meeting. Also something that came up at the Planning Commission meeting was to remove wine and liquor shops, but that has not been removed. You said that it would be removed regardless. Why is it still on here?
Well, a couple of things, just to rewind a second, the wine and liquor shop line that you're referring to, that's not proposed for Sub Area 4, so that's just Sub Area 2, although restaurant is proposed in the current proposal for both Area 2 and Area 4. So the, the line you're referring to is in Sub Area 2 and it says wine and liquor shop as a permitted use with the restricted size. And at the meeting, it did come up because the question was, well, if the liquor code doesn't permit a liquor license at One Normal Plaza right now for permitted uses, why would that be on there as permitted use at all? And I said that we could remove that, but then the Planning Commission didn't take any action to include that in their motion, so instead I, in the report, I reflected that that happened, so you'd be aware of it just for the sake of transparency. And then we put, if it's going to stay in the code, at the very least, there should be a parenthetical telling a potential shop owner that you may think this is permitted, but you need to check the status of liquor licenses. So, so yeah, so that's why we explained that in the report.
So I was at that meeting too. The way that I interpreted that, because this was right when they were talking about voting, was when you said that you would remove that regardless. There would be no need to take and make a motion to remove it because you just said that it would be removed and yet it's, yet it's still there. So, you know, the public heard that, I heard that and fully didn't expect it to be on there. The commissioners heard it too and, you know, Mr. Maticka, he even brought up this whole liquor, liquor piece and pulling it off. So, you know, one could easily assume that they didn't make that motion because they took you at your word.
Right, and so that is, yes, I understand what you're saying. So that was at about 3 hours and 30 minutes, maybe 3 hours and 40 minutes into the meeting, so it was a little bit, at the end, I think it was hard to know what people were hearing and what people were wanting to make motions on, so it was a little unclear at the end of the meeting what the commission was exactly thinking on that, which is why we spelled it out in the report to you for just the sake of transparency, so that you, you know, you're clearly able to do what you'd like as an elected official. But yeah, so there's like no hiding the ball. It is in there. I mean, it's in the report and we highlighted it in the report as well.
I've got a question for the council, just to get a feeling. Do you guys feel like we should take this off? Because this is what was talked about before it came to us. I'm not sure if you guys listened to the video recording at all or not, so...
So, Mr. Nord, I think the appropriate approach, and I'm going to ask you to hold that for the moment, is a motion for an amendment to remove that and then we can have that discussion. But there may be other, other items, so I think it'd be appropriate, if there's other exclusions that people want to talk about, that we bundle it into one amendment.
Okay, but before I yield my time, because I only have two times to speak, I don't want to lose my ability to make that motion. Well, I kind of need to do it now, otherwise I will lose it.
No, you won't have to worry about your time in making a motion. You can make a motion anytime.
Actually, Mayor, point of order, to your last point, I would rather, if there are going to be multiple different amendments, I would rather than be separate so that we have the opportunity to vote in favor of one and not another, if that ends up being the case, than bundling them all together and forcing a...
Fair enough.
Okay, then I move to remove wine and liquor shops from the ordinance.
Do we have a second?
Seven.
Thank you. So, Mr. Nord, if you want to go ahead with your point on that, you've got your full 10 minutes on the amendment.
My point is, is at the meeting, that's what was said, and I believe that that's why it wasn't brought up, because so many residents came and that was the only point, or not the only point, but that was the overwhelming point, was they wanted that part removed and, you know, they felt that they had a win walking away, that at least they got that. Commissioners didn't respond because they were told, "We would remove it regardless." And this issue has gone on for over a year and a half. I don't know that we've seen a group of people push for one issue for as long as they have. The only folks that I have seen even email us, come up and speak to us, are people that live in the area, they don't want it. The folks that do want it, they don't live in the area. Lots of the emails we received are from Virginia Avenue, you know, that's not even close to One Normal Plaza. So that also scares me as well because we're not talking about people just walking to go drink. We're talking about people that have to get in their car, they have to drive, drink, and then go elsewhere. So it's very different than like a Benignos, your local watering hole. You know, as Mulberry, Mulberry School said at the Planning Commission, they do not want liquor sales across from the school. It's going to hurt their business. You know, they take children from the school, walk them across that area to all the parks that are all around that, you know, and there are multiple schools in that area, Hammett Schools up there. In Normandy Village, there's another school there as well. So anyway, that's what I have for that motion. Thank you.
Give you the first shot at it, this is the second on the amendment.
Thanks. I would, I would agree that throughout the life of this issue, we have, and it is, the conversation's kind of flared up to it become more relevant and more public at times and then, you know, died down at other times, but nonetheless, a consistent theme through that all, that I have heard from people who live in that area revolves around the alcohol component. And while there were some other points that were brought up by our public speakers earlier this evening, that, if my notes are correct, was the one constant that all six or seven of our public commenters addressed tonight and certainly it's part of a number of email communication and others that, you know, we've all been receiving on this topic. I think it's completely reasonable. I think that the neighborhood has gone above and beyond to make their voice heard specifically on the alcohol issue and I think that removing that item here as proposed in this amendment keeps all of the good things that are proposed in this, but removes the one primary sticking point that our constituents, a lot of them have continually and passionately said that they don't want and I would urge all council members to support the amendment.
Thank you. Ms. Lorenz?
Thank you. As a, I think this is an intriguing idea and I'm scanning the minutes, which I did read from top to bottom, but now I can't seem to find it where this was discussed. So let me just ask a question. What kind of business, give me a, for instance, would a wine and liquor shop be? Would that be like a very small Bennies or something like that or a version of like a budget liquors or...
Yeah, it's a retail, a place that sells alcoholic retail, so...
Okay. So that would be the, that's a very specific thing and it, if I had this idea that I wanted to open up something like that, I would probably be deterred right now from doing that in this location because it's not permitted by the liquor code right now.
That's correct.
So if I, if I kind of been finding the points that Mr. Maticka was making, I think that's exactly the point he was trying to get at, like, doesn't this not make sense to have it in there? And so can you elaborate then, because this is what I can't find in the minutes? How, by recollection, recollection, how did the rest of that conversation go?
Well, it was pretty much as we discussed earlier, that we talked at the table about, you know, maybe we should just take it out. And then, because there wasn't, there really wasn't any resolution and I was not 100% sure what the commissioners might have thought, so that's why it's here as an obvious question for you.
The motion they did take up was in a past 5 to 1, I think, was something about extreme caution, care and caution to be used in revising liquor code, which isn't altogether different, but obviously related, so, all right. This is an interesting idea, so that's all I have.
Mr. McCarthy?
Can we have the proposed amendment stated specifically?
I move, or I move that we remove wine and liquor shops from the ordinance. All, all reference to wine and liquor shops from the ordinance.
To be clear, wine and liquor shop is different than a restaurant that serves liquor, correct?
Third, Mercy, if you could put it up on screen where it is in the ordinance, please? Well, it's just, it's in the ordinance and I want to make sure that I'm wording the exact words, how it is in the ordinance, because that's, I don't want to get it lost in a technicality.
Um, let's see here. It's listed, it's listed at the bottom of this slide, sorry.
With respect to the ordinance, the paragraph you're looking to strike is Section D2B41.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, what was that?
7-10.
Okay. So yeah, I'd like to strike the one that Mr. Day mentioned, number 4, number 41, wine and liquor shop, package page 7-10.
So that's, the scope of our, is wine and liquor retail sales shops.
Strike that entire line under number 41. Is it referenced anywhere else in the ordinance?
Mr. McCarthy?
I'm just trying to imagine what this, what that would be and how that would work. And so for that to work, assuming the language was left as is, we would have to change the liquor code?
That's correct.
That's best I could read from all the...
Right. If you were to leave it in, you could not open a wine and liquor shop unless the council went in and specifically allowed retail sales in C1 zoning districts.
And so if we were to amend the liquor code, the C1 liquor code, it not only would apply to One Normal Plaza, but all C1 areas?
One Normal Plaza is the only C1 we have in the town.
All right.
C1 mixed use.
Mixed use, PUD.
Right, right.
So we're able to be that specific in a liquor code carve-out of the only C1 mixed use, yada, whatever the rest of that detail was? Okay, so it wouldn't apply anywhere else, is what you're saying?
Right now it doesn't apply at all. How it would apply would depend entirely on how the council would choose to amend the liquor code if it were to indeed do so.
Sounds like a lot of gymnastics.
But it could. If you wanted to, yes, you could restrict it to C1 multi-use, you could, there's a number of options if there were a, an liquor code amendment before you.
Okay, so it'd be a pretty big rewrite, it sounds like. Am I misinterpreting that?
I'm sorry.
It would be a substantial rewrite of the liquor code to get that done or, I'm just asking. I know, never mind. He's, when the attorney gives you that look about the workload of a project. All right, that's all my questions for now.
Ms. Cummings?
Yes. Well, I do want to take this point to say that I'm, I think I'm the only council member who actually lives in the area, because I've heard over and over again, none of us live my, I walk out of my front door and can, and used to before the Baby Fold fixed the fence, would walk over there through that fence right there, because that's how close I am to it. I think you already kind of clarified through Mr. McCarthy's question about just, and I think too, when we clarified again a little furthermore on the actual motion with 40, it's just 41 and then we can talk about some of the other pieces as we go. And I think you asked already, was it, that this is the only line that it's in, correct? Okay. And then, okay, then, thank you. I think, I just wanted to make sure I heard right, because there was a lot of conversation going on and I was trying to absorb everything. That's all I have for now. Thank you.
Ms. Smith and then Mr. Nord? Ms. Smith, and then Mr. Nord.
So if this language is removed from this update to the planned urban development, if at a labor date, later date, a, an Italian restaurant wished to open, and I love wine with Italian dinner. I don't, I don't drink it much anytime else, but it goes great with pasta. If, if they wish to go in, and if it's not permitted use, would we then have to restart the entire PUD update process?
The wine and liquor shop use is not the same as the Italian restaurant with the glass of wine. So they're, they're just separate issues. But even now, with this proposed zoning code amendment, the liquor license doesn't permit a liquor license in C1. So there could be an Italian restaurant if you approved this proposed code amendment, but the restaurant could not get a liquor license unless you amended the liquor code separately.
Okay.
So taking out the wine and liquor shop has no bearing on the Italian restaurant?
Correct. Right. So I'll come to you, Mr. Nord, but I do have a couple of observations that I think are important to this. One is, it's very clear that One Normal Plaza serves the community as a whole, and one group of residents doesn't have priority or superior position over another group of residents in terms of how we apply zoning through our community. I think that's a point that should be made clear. And my other question is, while not in One Normal Plaza, you have packaged liquor sales directly adjacent to One Normal Plaza right now. So what, what problem are we solving by taking this out when there's already packaged liquor sales in, in the neighborhood? So, Mr. Nord, your time.
I think the problem we're solving is the residents were told one thing at a meeting, and now we're just kind of codifying what they were told and what the commissioners were told. I've got the audio if you want to hear exactly what it was verbatim. And that's what the public heard. And I just think we're just following through on this one for what we said. And just so everybody's aware, tonight is Pee-wee football night. So there are lots of little kids there with their parents right now while we're in this meeting. And this is where we want to, in the middle of the park, you know, just north of where the kids are playing, invite people to drive in, get their liquor, and go home. At that Planning Commission meeting as well, Mr. Matika mentioned, these roads are two-way, but they are narrow enough that they should just be one-way roads. You know, so those are just other concerns as well. But I'll stick with my motion.
Thank you. Further on the amendment, Mr. McCarthy?
This text language was left in, can Casey's pop a store in One Normal Plaza?
And not sell liquor? No.
Well, not sell liquor because there's no liquor license available to sell liquor in C1, but can Casey's pop a gas station in One Normal Plaza?
Not, not a service station, no. A convenient.
Convenience store.
Or inconsistent architectural.
Has to look like everything else.
Fashion, yeah. Anything's possible. I never want to say.
So in other words, what's across the street can't be in One Normal Plaza. That's, okay. Just want to make sure I was delineating and understanding what was being said here. I guess, I, you know, I think one of the things that was left out in some of the introductory remarks here is that, you know, some of this, the impetus for the change in One Normal Plaza text amendment was the comprehensive planning process identified this. And I know that's been mentioned, I think, in the Planning Commission and the meeting minutes that I read a few times over. And that, you know, nearly 2,000 people participated in that public process. And so it's not a trivial amount of public input into our town's comprehensive plan that believed that we should spend some time developing this area. I'll have more remarks later when it's not on this specific topic. But I believe also, as the mayor indicated, that, that public space and open spaces is really for the benefit of everybody, just like any other park or the Constitution Trail or anything else. And so it's, if it's equal and accessible to everybody.
Mr. McCarthy, I'm going to ask you to get on your microphone a little bit.
Sorry about that. I just said, I, if our public spaces are supposed to be equal and accessible to everybody in the community, then everybody should be able to have a voice. So I do believe that when we're talking about, you know, park spaces and, and commercial district, that everybody that has any ability to enjoy it or access it should have the ability to have some kind of input into it either way.
Thank you.
I got one more question.
Ms. Cummings?
I guess my question is more to spark a thought for us as a group. And the reason why I say that is because I'm, I'm looking at this and as we are having our discussion and conversation, and it's specifically to number 41 only. And just having a thought from my own, how can I say it, bringing up or the environment in which I came from, and just kind of having some different thoughts. I'm sitting here listening and having several different thoughts. I can, I see both sides of conversations on, on this particular item, but I also want to, if possible, hear a few feedback. I think for this particular item, while some instances could be multi-use, if you, if you will, there could also be the thought of it being just these two items within a facility. And growing up where I grew up, that could be an issue. And I'm just trying to, to think a little bit about, about this. And it's not to say, you know, we're not talking about restaurants, we're not talking about multifunctional spaces. We're talking about places that solely focus on the item in the line. While I know sometimes we have, first of all, we know right now, as it is, we would have to update the liquor code. But I think sometimes just for the, the ease of it all, because we understand the process and maybe not everyone else, maybe through the ease of it all, and to not think about the possibilities, because all of us may not be sitting here a couple of years from now, and somebody else might be okay with it, because that could possibly happen. You know, two, four, two to four years, we all could be wiped out of here, and you have somebody else who's okay with that thought and will be willing to change it. And so I'm trying to think ahead, and I'm thinking of all avenues and all aspects, specifically to number 41, and get some, some thoughts really, you know, and, and I can understand for some people, like I said, from my own upbringing, just hearing that what I normally would see when that is, is developed. And it's never, you know, it's that, then other things come into play that are not always as positive later. And not so much in the people, it's just other stores that it attracts. Not to say that we would, I get where people come from when they see that. And it's just what they see. And again, going back to, we understand about the C1 PUD, but not everybody does, as well as we may not always be here, who kind of have an understanding and a reasonable thought process of where things should go and how we see our community. Because many of us were there on October 2019 when we came up with the idea of changing the text amendment to, to do some, some, have some opportunities for development and bring some, some new life into that area. So just some thoughts and questions throwing out to you, to you all as a council, maybe for some more conversation and feedback.
Ms. Lorenz?
Yeah, Ms. Cummings, thanks for kind of segueing into future, because that's, that's where I want to go. And a question to staff here. So if we were to strike number 41 tonight and not allow it on the premise that, well, current code wouldn't allow it anyway, but it could allow an eating and drinking establishment that served lemonade, right?
Correct.
Or tea or something like that. Just not anything to spike that lemonade or tea. Okay. So if we were to take that out on the premise that the code is the what it is, fast forward, like Ms. Cummings was saying, four years, and let's say the code has changed because we've got Ms. Smith's Benigno's in there, and she wants her glass of wine and so, with her pasta. And so now, the code has changed, can you reintroduce a use into POD, a PUD, multi-use C1 PUD like this?
It would just be a new zoning text amendment.
Yeah.
Okay. So we're not, we're, this isn't necessarily forever. It just, maybe it makes sense now, but in four years, it might not make sense, and you could always redo it. Somewhat to the chagrin of our code writer, maybe, that in other words, amendment has to be made, but it could be done, is what I'm hearing. Okay. So, second question is, what if I wanted to open, and I think this is where you were getting, a tiny, a tiny Target that sells various and sundry things, and I also want to sell beer and wine packaged? Can't do it.
Yeah, you can't do it, and thus the liquor code is amended.
Unless the liquor code, okay. So it's any retail shop, whether they sell, you know, paper goods and maybe even groceries, could not do packaged liquor?
Currently, no, that is correct.
Okay.
Right.
Permitted use to have the retail shop.
Yes.
But not to sell packaged liquor?
Correct.
Okay. All right. I've got clarity. Thank you.
So a couple of things that I want to touch on. First, it, your reference to Pee-wee football, the Pee-wee football's actually being played closer to a packaged liquor store than right now, tonight, right across the street.
If we look at the map.
Mr. Nord, I'm, I have the floor. I'm not going to beleaguer that point. To me, you know, I like to keep things broad and accessible for the business community. And I will say, you know, I've got 40-some years of retail experience. The worst possible location to put a packaged liquor store, wine and beer, would be inside One Normal Plaza. That would be a horrible business decision. What could function there would be a small wine shop that specialized. That could function in that environment. But what people consider a packaged liquor store, I can't think of a worse location for it than One Normal Plaza. So that kind of affects the way I think about these things. We can't paint all businesses with the same brush. And especially in the liquor business, it is an incredibly, incredibly competitive business. And for somebody to open a broad packaged liquor store in a location that's hard to get to, they'd be out of business in no time. It's just, it's too competitive of an environment. But somebody renting 400 or 500 square feet to do specialty wines or something like that, that might work. So that's kind of my thought process. Further on this item, on the agenda?
So again, to reiterate, currently, the liquor code doesn't allow for any alcohol, period. So some of this conversation is moot. But it, and I was asking my questions about the difficulty of the, the liquor code changes, not to stress you out, Mr. Day, but rather to, it, it seems if we're going to restrict alcohol sales, it would make more sense to do that in the liquor code rather than through a zoning language.
Right. And yeah, I think that's the point, is we don't regulate zoning. And we had this discussion in front of the Planning Commission, we don't regulate alcohol through the zoning code. We regulate it through the liquor code. And I think, and that was kind of the confusion with Mr. Matika's motion, is he wanted to allow.
Right.
In fact, I think he wanted to allow wine and liquor shops and prohibit other uses.
Right.
Which is why this stayed in there, why we didn't touch the amendment, because the Planning Commission didn't do it, is there was some confusion on the Planning Commission's part as to what they were, what they were doing. But, no. So, yeah, right now, nothing's allowed. There are no retail sales. There are event activities that can have them. No retail sales unless council wants to change the code. How you want to change the code, if you wanted to.
Right, right.
There's a number of permutations that could do that. It could be using adding three letters. It could be rewriting the whole general concept of the liquor code, but.
So if we can indeed be that specific, it seems to me we should regulate alcohol in the liquor code, not try to start to invent carveouts and, and things to do what the liquor code is designed to do, me personally. So I'd, I'd rather see us do it there, if we're even going to change the liquor code at all. I'm not suggesting that that's what we're going to do. Currently, if we do nothing, there will be no alcohol except for some special use, and they have to come front of the liquor commission to get that anyway. So I'd rather see us, if, if C1 liquor use changes in the liquor code, that we make provision there. I'd rather see it there.
So we have the amendment and the, a motion or a vote in the affirmative is to strike that line out of it. A no vote, we'd keep it in, correct? Please call the roll.
McCarthy?
No.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mr. Nord?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Cummings?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mayor Kuss?
No. The item is struck from the, from the line. Now we're back to the overarching ordinance. Further discussion on that? Mr. Preston?
Thanks. So much of our conversation on this item overall has been focused on this amendment tonight that I, I want to make sure it's not missed, that by and large, this is a tremendous step forward, I think. It has been 30-some years since this has been addressed or looked at. And personally, I think it makes a lot of sense and is a good responsive economic development approach to look at One Normal Plaza in the different subareas rather than blanket, you know, across the entire span of the property there, as has been the case of two now. So there's a lot of good in here. I think that it will enhance the space. It will be mindful of the residential nature of where it's at overall, but still really provide some, some interesting and some intriguing opportunity to keep that space going and growing in the future. And I, I think that's really great. So one question I do have, though, in, in light of this, that is one for staff, I believe it is in subarea two. A handful of years ago, we had, this council had approved an agreement with the property owner of the admin building, that that would be demolished. And if, unless they worked very quick this afternoon, I do believe that that is, though just barely, still standing. Is that correct? And what is going on with that? And how does that tie into this? Which, I mean, it does to some extent, because with that being down, opportunity for what could potentially go in its place is addressed here.
I'm not quite sure which question is.
What's going on with the admin building?
Which is gone.
The infirmary building.
Do you mean the infirmary, Mr. Preston, or the, or the site where the admin building was?
I'm sorry. The infirmary building is what I meant, not the admin building. Thanks.
I was a little confused.
Yeah. I'll, I'll be cautious. Actually, the town was, was issued an administrative search warrant about a week before the shutdown. And so I did actually, I met with the owner. We, we went through the property and took, you know, a variety of pictures, preparing to go back to meet with the judge to, to review that. And of course, during the shutdown, the offices were essentially closed. And so whether, you know, your perception of how you would see that is whether it's a benefit to that owner, you know, but essentially, that's where it was left. And then, of course, this process started. But there's, there's no question, we, I personally have a long history of, of trying to deal.
You know, we've, we've made some ground. Like we do anywhere else in the community, things take time, and granted, this has been there for a long time. But, you know, the town did take the step to remove the, the admin building, and then, like I said, the infirmary is part of that package still remains, so. Thanks.
Fair enough. Ms. Lorenz? Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, I'm listening.
Ms. Lorenz and then Mr. McCarthy.
Okay. Thank you. I want to kind of come back around to the PUD process in and of itself to alleviate some concerns that I heard in the public comment. And we danced around this a little bit in our previous motion discussion. You know, the, the Italian restaurant with the wine, should that come up for consideration by a business owner? There's two very public hoops and hurdles that have to happen for that business owner to succeed. And they're, they're very public. One is through the Planning Commission, correct? Seeing nods. And the other, of course, would be the biggest meeting probably on earth, which would be the Liquor Commission on this topic. I mean, that's really where this issue of to have or not to have alcohol would come into play, is in that Liquor Commission meeting. And so I just want to put that out there, is that's the process, right there. Now, we could open our Italian restaurant, and the good thing about the PUD process, from my recollection on Planning Commission, is that there's a lot of scrutiny that goes into the, the look and the feel and the image, and, you know, aesthetics of the buildings, whether it be a new building or renovation or what have you. So take heart, I guess it'd be my message to the neighbors, that this thing is a planned unit development. Because there's a lot of security that you have in it being a planned unit development. What you wouldn't want is to bust a thing up and let thirty-two different business owners subdivide the land as you wish, or three hundred. So there's a lot of goodness to it being a planned unit development. Okay. Have I said anything wrong to my experts here? Do you want to?
No, the only thing I would interject is that, and I think we tried to touch on this during the Planning Commission public hearing, is that if there are new uses, should the council consider approving this, that don't exist out there now, it would be an amendment to the PUD.
Right.
Where that applicant would come back through. Now, however, there are a number of uses listed that are nothing substantial from the outside world, those could just be processed administratively. But any new use would go through the, again, the public hearing process, everybody would get noticed, there'd be a public hearing, and it would ultimately come to you for a final decision.
Okay. So, so that's, that's a message I really would like for the neighbors who have been, you know, arguably and understandably very concerned about this, is there's a very public process, very stringent process, and it works. The second point, and it's actually going to have to start with a question, just to remind me, I do live in Ironwood, right next to the golf course. Is there alcohol sales at Ironwood?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Can people take those out on the golf course?
No, not supposed to.
Okay. All right, let's hope not. I don't golf, I just live next to the golf course. Why I bring that up is that potentially people are drinking in my backyard, and I don't even know it. But seriously, in all seriousness, this town has a history, and I'm guessing I'm going to look at, you know, Mr. Tremmel with his inspections and our chief of police in terms of keeping, you know, order and safety. We have a history of being able to do things and allow things socially, like alcohol. And that wasn't allowed in the beginning. When we first moved to this community, there was no alcohol sales at the clubhouse. And that came sometime later. Nothing bad has happened. Now, credit, credit the golf course, credit Parks and Rec, credit inspections, credit police. The other thing that's happened very well in this community is, and I remember this being a real big concern, when some of those student, not some, but when student apartments went up along the trail, oh my gosh, there was going to be, you know, just bedlam and mayhem, there was going to be beer bottles all over the, all over the Constitution Trail. And even I was concerned, I think I was on Planning Commission at the time. You know, I am always interested to see, when I go through that stretch, as I often do, and especially this most recent weekend, not a shard of glass to be found, not any litter whatsoever to be found adjacent to those ones that I, right along kind of the, as you're heading from north to south into uptown. You know, maybe you see some kids out playing, you know, bags or cooking something on a little grill, but, you know, by and large, things are kept in order. And so, you know, that is, I see somebody shaking their head over there, maybe they're seeing some other examples, but I do think about the fact that we've got guide rails in place through inspections, through police, through Parks and Rec, that allow us to function safely and still have some fun, I guess would be my point. So, so I guess to the neighbors too, however this may develop through these modified zoning text amendments, know that you've got really qualified staff and public services who are there for you. And if you feel that there's a noise problem, call up the police. The town will respond. And I think we've shown over and over and over where that's happened. Now, if somebody in the audience is feeling like they see different, I encourage you to call the staff, be it inspections, be it police, because we want to know about it. But that's been my history here in this community, living here for twenty-seven years, being on Planning Commission for a number of years, and now sitting here, is that we can do things and we can, we can maintain order. And that is a testimony to the staff and to those who I mentioned, police, inspections, Parks and Rec, I'm probably missing some others, Public Works, thank you. So, those are my two comments for the neighbors.
Mr. McCarthy? I'm finally getting to you, I'm sorry.
No worries, Mayor, thank you very much. There's a lot to this one agenda item. A lot's been talked about, and although a lot of the conversation's been around alcohol tonight, I'm happy we've made a decision and are moving forward on that part. I too am very excited about the potential of One Normal Plaza as an asset for our entire community to use and share. You know, I've been a user of that park for many years, I've kicked a soccer ball around in the park, I've attended business meetings, I've watched my grandson take swimming lessons, attended grandparents' day at Mulberry School, I've been in public meetings in the community activity center there, and, and a lot of other things. I'm a huge fan, and I love the park-like nature of it, and will continue to advocate for its preservation and, without limiting its potential. And I think the code that we are considering tonight goes a long way towards, in fact, doing more preservation than has ever been attempted in code, at least in text and formalized than any other time in, in its history. I want to thank everybody who's come out to speak to us tonight. That's not always an easy thing to show up at a meeting and stand up and tell us how you think. We've had a lot of emails of late, and whether you spoke in favor of it, or emailed, or called me to support it, all the feedback is important, and I really appreciate all of that, and please continue to do so, that's how we know how you feel. Thanks to staff for your hard work. I know you've been trying to thread the needle and strike a delicate balance between encouraging prosperity in the area and yet preserve the goodness that's there and exists. As I mentioned before, the comprehensive plan, I don't think we can underestimate the value of all of those citizens that gave us input, that also believed in the value of this area and its development. I'm sure as we go forward, we will continue to debate what's appropriate and inappropriate in the area, regardless of, of what happens with this proposal tonight. And I, I hope we do as a good public discourse. I'm going to share some impressions of the proposal, clean up some misinformation that I think has been out there, and some concerns and, and hopes like some of my other colleagues have. I'd love to see us preserve the feel and the nature of One Normal Plaza. Moving to fifty to sixty percent green space is over a three hundred percent increase in protection green space than it's ever been done before. It preserves the special area one, essentially as is, and makes no changes to that. Any new buildings must maintain the look and feel with current design and the architecture, as Mr. Tremmel reassured me in my Casey's example. By account, in special area two, there's only seven parcels have the ability to increase building size and yet meet the special, or meet the green space requirement. So we will not see much expansion in actual building footprint under this code suggested text amendment. I think the five thousand square foot limitations on businesses mean they'll be big box, particularly when we eliminate drive-throughs, retailers are likely to even consider One Normal Plaza. As Ms. Lorenz talked about, any new use proposals have to go through the PUD process, back through Planning Commission, back through us, and go through that, the scrutiny through all of this again. As, if any businesses are watching, trust me, they're going to think twice about what their proposed use is and, and coming through because they see that it's going to be scrutinized. I think these safeguards go way above and beyond what currently exists by far, and stronger safeguards than it ever been in, in place before. I do have a concern, I think, you know, there's been opinions voiced about, or ideas about limiting and leaving it as is. As, I forget who asked the question, that this is a C1 commercial mixed-use business district, and it will remain a commercial, that it is in fact a commercial business district with private property owners. And on, on some level, I bristle and, and struggle when we try to tell property owners what they can and can't do with their property. Certainly, there's limits when we're talking about commercial and close proximity to residences, but I struggle when we start to limit ability, businesses' abilities to be successful. And we can see that. You know, there's, we were just talking about one of the buildings. There's buildings that have been torn down. Otherwise intact buildings would not have been torn down if this was a commercially viable district. Why a business has not been flocking to this area to invest their private dollars to, to thrive in this commercial district, because the assets and the structures are very, very limited in what they can do? I think this area needs help. We have to thread that needle, though, I agree, between protecting and preserving and yet encouraging economic development. And again, I think that we're doing a great job adding protections that we've never seen before in, in any other district that I can recall, any other zone that I can recall. Something that Ms. Lorenz mentioned, that the town has a history of successful stewardship in One Normal Plaza. Somebody spoke passionately about what you enjoy. I think almost all of the emails that we got, whether they supported the changes or were against the changes, expressed passion and support for One Normal Plaza. I think it's important for us to recognize that One Normal Plaza is the way it is principally because of the stewardship and the work by the town staff and the code work that's gone done, that's been done to date. Hopefully, we can trust staff and council to continue to make those good decisions as we go forward, whatever happens tonight, whether this goes forward or doesn't go forward tonight. I've certainly listened to both sides. I have some concerns on comments on both sides. I carry and support those of you that expressed fears about potential development forward. As long as I'm in this chair, I will continue to, to help represent those fears here. But remember, possibilities don't mean actualities, and what we imagine as scary scenarios doesn't necessarily follow from business proposals. I live near Colleen Hous Elementary at Vernon and Grandview. There's no commercial, there's no alcohol, there's no anything. And yet a man was run over by a car. In One Normal Plaza shortly before the election, I was involved in a car accident inside the park by somebody who was speeding through not to go to a liquor store, not to a restaurant, not to a sporting event, but to go to church. So just because alcohol sales are involved doesn't mean that we're increasing danger and risk. There's danger and risk whenever there's a car involved and whenever there's pedestrians involved. I've been over there during sporting events, I've watched balls go across Beach Street, I've watched little kids almost run in front of cars to get them, I've watched the amount of traffic. Let's be careful about the assumptions we're making about businesses and what it necessarily means or doesn't mean. I'm supportive of these text amendments, as I believe they represent a good compromise between preservation and business stimulation. But again, I will continue to carry all the concerns that I've heard forward. If we ever do get to a liquor discussion, I'll make sure that I carry these concerns and that we're very protective of that area, because I for one don't want to see anything that's incompatible or increased risk or decreased property values that, excuse me, that some of you have, have mentioned. Lastly, I want to thank my council colleagues tonight for the healthy discussion. It's a good trend I see up here that we are considering and debating out loud, some of the finer details of what's going on. A lot of what we're talking about is really things that are going to be discussed or decided at individual business proposal levels. And really, again, for the audience, we're not considering any particular business proposals tonight. There's been some fear being sowed in the public about the development intentions of some business property owners, particularly those were directed at the owners of Normandy Village. And I encourage you, if you have questions about the intentions of property owner, is, is, you know, there's those that have political agendas. If you have questions about the business owners, go talk to the business owners. Some are here in the audience tonight. You want to know what their plans are? Talk to them rather than listening to fear being sowed with those that have political agendas. Right? Go to the horse's mouth, get it from them. Don't listen to me. They've assured me, I asked them what their intentions are, and, and they don't have any intentions of, of creating restaurant and alcohol store hubs that some people are trying to spread fear around about doing. So please, if you have questions about the business intentions of individual property owners or business owners, please do take that passion and question and talk to the business owners and see what is on their mind, and share your concerns with them, and they'll have the ability to share their ideas with you as well. It doesn't stop here with us. Thanks, Mayor.
Ms. Cummings?
Well, I don't think there's much more left for me to say. Thank you, Mr. McCarthy. But I do want to share, I think it's very important that I share at this particular moment, something that really pained me about this whole thing. It was brought to my attention that I wasn't considered a resident of the area or a neighbor of the area, over and over again, to people who thought a certain way. And I was even told that one person who thought opposite of what a particular group of people were thinking had been basically bullied. That's not the community that I would be proud to represent, but I'm proud to represent normal. And I ask that we do better in that. That it's okay that people have different opinions, and we don't discount a neighbor just because they don't live on the same side of the street as we do. If we live in the community, we share the community together. As I stated earlier, I used to walk to go boat at the community center before the baby fold fixed the fence. Because it's, it, it made no sense, it took me longer to hop in the car or drive around the corner than it would for me to walk over there. than it would for me to walk over there. So yes, I am a neighbor. Yes, I do live in the community. And yes, I do care about what happens. And that's why I'm sitting here. I am glad this is on our agenda tonight. I was glad when we had the conversation in October of 2019 at our strategic planning because it opened up the doors for the possibilities of what else could be. And it doesn't have to be all the negative. You're talking, speaking to somebody who, as some people would say, suffers from anxiety. And if you ever suffer from anxiety, that means your brain always go to the negative first in its outcomes. We can't be an anxiety-bungering community where the first idea we think when we hear anything about development or progress or moving forward or redeveloping has to be on the negative. Growth is good because either you evolve or you die. And we have to make a decision as a community. Do we want to evolve and continue to thrive and grow, or do we want to die on the vine? And so I implore you to consider the possibilities and know, yes, there will be further conversations of any type of development that will happen because it is a PUD. I don't want to scare businesses by saying it's going to be extremely stringent and that it's going to take your firstborn and your right arm and your heart, too. But there will be conversation, and we want to make sure that it's the right fit, something normal has always done. We want to make sure that it will help us grow as a community, something we've always done. We'll make sure that it's, if we can, more revenue. And we know that right now, there's not much that's really heavy revenue. We know that sales tax and food and beverage tax is what's on the higher end of our revenue sources. So that's why we had the conversation and started talking about what those possibilities would be. But I ask you to open your mind to think about what the possibilities can be, and not think negatively, but think positively, and be just as engaged as you are right now throughout the entire process and as we look at what can be in that space. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Mr. Nord.
Thank you. As far as that area not being economically viable, at the testimony that was given at the hearing commission, Normandy Village was bought in, what, 2017, 2016, something like that? It is 98% occupied right now. That's from their testimony. So there's, it doesn't sound like they have a problem with getting people to rent there. Then, in that sub-area, too, all those spaces are occupied. We've got, there was new construction that happened there with the masons. Miras went in there and they completely redid the building, you know, and a party supply store and rental shop is in there now. You know, that was new here since I've been elected. I remember when they moved. So there is economic activity. I mean, properties have traded hands. Things have improved in that area. I don't see where there's no economic activity that's driving all these changes. The changes that are up there, if you look at current, there's only a few up there. Look at proposed, we're adding a whole lot of new business opportunities there. So once the town is willing to release the properties, which we as a council have to say, release these properties so that way some of these businesses can choose to go in there. But up until that happens, we're stifling the development ourselves because that's the only vacant space. And if we read the packet, it said specifically, the reason for bringing this forward was because of one of the property owners and because there was interest in putting in a brew pub. At the testimony for the property owners, all right, for the hearing commission, their testimony from the property owners was that they came to the town, they contacted, or they were contacted by the brew pub as well. And in our write-up, it says, you know, trying to bring a brew pub is something that this came forward for. So the eating and drinking establishments, with that text in there, can that drinking establishment serve alcohol, as it's written?
No.
So what I've heard from residents is we're removing a protection. The zoning code, you know, prohibits eating and drinking establishments. The proposed language that we're adding is eating and drinking establishments with... Ms. Day, if you want to flip the slide to show that we are adding it, it's something that's proposed that's not currently there. Ms. Davidson, thank you. See, so we're adding it, that's something that's not there. So we're removing a layer of protection. And what I would like to see us do is consider adding one word to this, eating and non-alcoholic drinking establishments. One word. That's what I would like to see us add. Now, when we talk about how, you know, impaired driving, you know, may not be an issue, well, I disagree with that. I looked up Vision Zero from Eugene, Oregon, which is striving to have zero fatalities, something that the town is committed to do and go forward with. Regional planning is doing this, Bloomington's doing this, you know, so we're doing this as a community. And they talk about impairment and some of the challenges that come from now, you know, over there, they've got marijuana shops more than what we have here, but that's a problem. And breweries specifically are called out as well. It's not just a driving vehicle problem, they're also talking about fatalities and injuries that happen with people on their bicycles. That's becoming a bigger issue. 72% or pedestrians were found to be impaired 72% of the time, and bicyclists 86% of the time when they're involved in a serious or fatal crash. So we've got Constitution Trail going through there as well. You know, we just voted to add it through there. The residents have concerns about the drinking. So we had, at the Planning Commission meeting, there were folks that testified Mulberry School, who's right there in the center, across the street from Happy Splashes, they were saying, you know, they're afraid of a Hooters coming in, you know, where they serve food and liquor. That was their store name that they heard, and then, yes, it was, the conversation started about, you know, whether a chain could come in there. But the idea is it's a restaurant, drinking establishment with alcohol that's inviting people to come in, driving that one-way circle around right in front of their area where children may be walking around, you know, parents coming to pick up. So I would like to move that we add the word "non-alcoholic" before "drinking establishment" in both locations in the ordinance.
Is that a motion for an amendment?
Yes.
Thank you. Is there a second? There is no second. The amendment fails.
Then I would thank you for that. Then, the last thing that I would like to say is, I would have voted for this had we have added that section. But what I fear is the first child that gets struck by somebody that has come out of an establishment that we have removed a protection within the zoning code to prevent impaired driving in that neighborhood? I don't want my name associated with that because that will come back up. People will search the historical records to see who voted to remove one of the protections that kept alcohol out of One Normal Plaza, and I won't put my name to that. Thank you.
Mayor.
I think, you know, we've had plenty of discussion here, and we can go round and round on this. So I would ask if you've got something new to add. Everyone's made their points very clear here tonight, so let's not get into circular discussion. But Ms. Smith, you have something to say?
I would just ask, I once served with a board of faculty from a university institution and had English majors continually picking apart things. I don't think it's necessary to nitpick the phrasing of this. I don't want us to go down that path. Just let's call the question and vote.
Thank you. And everyone seems to agree. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mr. Nord?
No.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Cummings?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mayor Kous?
Aye. The ordinance amending the town of Normal's zoning code is approved. We're going to take a break here. I think there are a lot of people that were here specifically for that issue, so that gives a chance for us to stretch our legs a little bit and for a little off.
Mr. Nord, you should take that citywide, if that's your feeling, you should strongly eliminate alcohol from the town of Normal.
Well, we're putting it right in the middle of the park. The residents spoke, the businesses spoke over there, too, as well.
A lot of people spoke on both sides of it. And so what I saw, people on both sides spoke, and they had differences of opinion on issues, but the overarching that I got from the letters was the tone and the culture of that district, everyone wants to see preserved. So this does change some uses, you're right about that.
Yeah, well, the alcohol is what the citizens said. They sent us over 80 letters. This goes back for a long time.
I know.
And the only responses we had from people that wanted it are people that are going to have to drive in there. And, you know, I've got kids that play soccer there, football scares me to death. They're going to go through those little narrow roads, people are going to be driving that we invited them in and drink.
Fair enough.[1317.33] Fair enough.
I think we're ready to start.
All righty. I predicted nine o'clock that this was where we would be.
Mm-hmm. That's pretty accurate. Our next agenda item is an ordinance approving an amendment two to the redevelopment agreement with Bush Development LLC having to do with Trail East.
With approval.
Second.
Thank you. Ms. Reese?
Thank you, Mayor. I am going to take a few moments to introduce this particular agenda item and the following four items, kind of discuss them all at once, and since they are all connected. The first item, which is item number eight on your agenda, is asking council to approve amendment number two to the redevelopment agreement with Bush Development, which we reference as the Trail East project. I'm pleased that we are able to present this to you tonight. I think it's a great story and a great step in getting this project moving forward, and we're excited to share this with you. I'll give a little bit of background. The council authorized redevelopment agreement in October of 2018 to move forward on this Trail East project. This project is located on what I reference as the northeast quadrant of Uptown Circle. And so we adopted, council adopted, a redevelopment agreement in October of 2018 for this project. Originally, it was planned to be five stories high on the circle, and then as you moved along Constitution Boulevard, it dropped down to four stories in height up to College Avenue. It was massing up about 115,000 square feet. In January of 2019, council approved the First Amendment to the redevelopment agreement. That amendment referenced a couple of things, a couple of additions. The development decided to, Bush decided to incorporate 106 East Beaufort into that project, which most people reference as Windy City Wieners. And then we also incorporated a sales tax, food and beverage tax and sales tax rebate in the project because the Trail East project grew to incorporate that space. So at amendment number one, which was adopted in January of 2019, the project grew from a previous $29.2 million project to about a $30 million project. And that's why we incorporated the food and beverage tax abatement as an incentive. A lot has happened since January of 2019, and council may recall, we addressed some issues pertaining to the mural on 104 East Beaufort during 2019. During 2020, there was a pandemic which affected financial markets for a while and some uncertainties regarding the economy. And so here we are now in August of 2021 presenting amendment number two. I'm going to step back one moment and say, in amendment number one, when we brought this to council in January 2019, we had indicated what the next steps would be, and that when, prior to commencing construction, the town would have to address the vacation of an alley and vacation of some easement along the circle. Part of that, part of that is associated with the massing in regard to the, so I'm referencing a couple of the following action items. Referencing the massing, we had indicated back in 2019 that the design of the building included a first-story arcade that would encompass a small portion of the public sidewalk. We're now to the point where the design is laid out, and we know what part of the public sidewalk needs to be vacated. That is very comparable to this current building we're in, where there's an arcade and some pillars, and as well as one uptown on the circle. So that is driving the request to vacate some easement there. The other thing we mentioned in January 2019 was alley access, and that's been part of the redevelopment agreement from the start. The alley that runs behind the East Beaufort Street properties along the north side of East Beaufort, we had indicated early on that the developer wanted to incorporate the alley into their site. And so the action tonight involves vacating the alley. We will then have what's referenced as a public access easement. So that explains a couple of those action items. So tonight, what we're presenting to you is amendment number two to the redevelopment agreement. There's some pretty significant changes, but I believe they all are for the better of the project and will have a great outcome. The first being that the building is going to be a little bit smaller in scale. Rather than five stories on the circle and four stories moving north along Constitution Boulevard, it's going to be one story less. It will be four stories on the circle and three stories along Constitution Boulevard. That massing changes the building from 115,000 square feet down to 95,000 square feet. So still a significant building that will incorporate multi-use, retail and restaurant use on the first floor, commercial space on the upper floors, and then additional residential. The residential component will be nineteen residential units on a portion of the third floor and then all of the fourth floor. One additional thing to note, which I think is very significant, is this particular project that we're bringing to you tonight, the amendment modifies the previous plan regarding the mural. 104 East Beaufort is the building that has the mural on the west face of the building. Previously, following a lawsuit and such, the town had indicated that we would be relocating the building at our cost. It was going to be significant expense. The developer, Bush Development, has incorporated that wall into their structure. So that mural, that mural wall will no longer be relocated. It will be preserved in place. And I think that's a win for the community. But part of the design change, in order to incorporate that mural, we are required then to vacate a little bit of the sidewalk easement along the East Beaufort sidewalk, so that the wall of the Trail East building can come out and surround that mural wall. So there's, that requires the building to come out a little bit into the sidewalk. So we're asking council to vacate a small portion of that sidewalk on East Beaufort, drops it down to about six feet wide, so still accessible. But that is one of the outcomes of their preservation of the mural wall. And then one other item, I think to note, there's two significant items. One is, in the previous redevelopment agreement, the town had committed 300 parking spaces to the project, 200 of which were going to be located in the College Avenue deck. At this point, since the building is slightly smaller, we have modified that scope to 200 parking spaces. So from 300 to 200. And of those 200 spaces, 100 will be located in the College Avenue deck. So there's a slight modification in the parking. And then last but not least is the incentive, the public investment in this project. Previously, under the original redevelopment agreement, the developer was eligible to receive up to $8.4 million in the, from the Uptown TIF based upon their, the growth in the equalized assessed value. So basically, the increment from the growth of the value of the property was going to be going back to fill the gaps for the developer in the project. Because the project has changed, we are proposing to you an amendment then that reduces that TIF investment from 8.4 million down to a maximum of $6 million over the life of the TIF. So those are the significant modifications to redevelopment agreement. That's what we're asking you to approve this evening. And then, as mentioned, the following items pertain to vacating easements and right-of-way in the alley. And I will mention, just to, just from the start, the following items, item eight is the redevelopment agreement amendment. Items nine, 10, and 11 pertain to vacating the public, the public way. And then item 12 is the adoption of the, of the preliminary, or excuse me, I should put on my glasses here, the adoption of the final plat. But I do want to mention that items nine and 11, in order to pass a six-vote minimum is required by council. So those are the highlights of all these action items for you this evening. I do want to mention that Bush Development is represented in the audience, and A.J. Loss is here to answer any questions the council may have about this project.
Thank you. Before we go into discussion and that, are there questions for staff at this point? Mr. Nord?
Thank you. So with the parking spaces, there's also, at least according to the picture that was in the write-up, in that parking lot that's out there, there's about 100 spaces, it kind of looked like. I'm worried about where those folks are going to be able to park. How much, once we assign parking in these other two garages, how much space is left for other people that don't work in Uptown or have otherwise reserved spaces?
Well, we certainly believe there's adequate parking spaces. We can affirm that with our parking study that we have upcoming, I suppose. But we were confident two years ago, or a year and a half ago, that we could commit to 300 parking spaces. So now that we're committing to 200, I'm still confident that we can do that. And provide adequate parking for the public.
Do you know how many spaces that is, that are open to the public that are not reserved?
In terms of in our decks and surface lots?
In these, in these two lots, how many, I guess in the parking garage that's in this building, and then the College Avenue one, how many vacant spaces are there that are not assigned?
I can't give you that number. I don't know. Off the top of my head, I don't know.
Okay, that concerns me because the folks that want to come and visit Children's Discovery Museum or other things up here, we don't know if they've got enough space. I've been turned away before when I've come into this building because the parking lot has been full.
Can I ask you, I'm not trying to shut you down, but would you ask your questions and then take the answers to your comments, so I don't have to ding you for time on that?
Okay. So I just want the council to know that I've come and the parking lot has been full. So if we're giving away another 200 spots, the problem's going to happen more frequently. Another question is, with the tenant that was moving, or that's no longer going to be a part of this, there's no tenant that's in the wings that is willing to move in? Is that why they're eliminating that floor?
Mr. Nord, I'm not prepared to talk about their tenants and their tenants' plans. I can simply say that we are reacting to the developer's request to modify the size of the structure, and we think this is a good plan for Uptown and for the community.
Is there anything in the agreement that requires their tenants to pay property tax or to not take a property tax abatement that the state may offer if they're a tax-exempt entity, so we can ensure that the town receives all the property tax increase?
I'll ask Mr. Day. I don't believe there's any language in the redevelopment agreement with Bush, and we don't control the lease agreements between Bush and their tenants. So, Mr. Day?
So the owner would be the one responsible for the property tax, which would be Bush or whoever the listed owner is. So it wouldn't be the individual tenants paying property tax. In this case, because it's a TIF incentive, it wouldn't make any sense if they didn't pay the property tax because they wouldn't be getting the incentive. So we've got provision saying they have to notify us before they make any claim for a property tax reduction if they're challenging their assessment. But the law says we can't say that they are prohibited from seeking any type of assessment change.
Okay. Because municipalities, we are able to let the tax assessor know that this is for municipal use and then not pay property tax on certain properties. When I was talking with the tax assessors, they had said that if, that there's also...
Mr. Nord, sorry to interrupt again, but I'm going to start the clock if you're going to go into discussion. This is for questions and, you know, make the notes. Your points are well taken, but if we're going to have a back-and-forth, I'm going to start your clock.
Okay. So with the property tax, if ISU moves in, they have the ability, if the lease is long enough, to request that the property taxes be abated since they're non-for-profit, just like other non-for-profits would, like the town would, which means they can recoup those costs back. And then the local taxpayers are not getting that property tax increase. Is there anything in this agreement that protects the taxpayers to make sure that we do get these property taxes?
No, I don't believe your interpretation of the property tax, how the property taxes would work there is correct. If ISU owned the property...
If you went twelve or twenty years ago.
If ISU owned the property, they could go and seek a property tax reduction. In this case, because ISU doesn't own the property, they're merely renting it and paying the rent to the landlord. It's the landlord who's paying the property taxes. And there wouldn't be a property tax exemption in that case.
Okay. I was told differently. Thank you for pointing that out. And then, can I ask about the other ordinances, or do you want to just do this one first?
I think it's appropriate if council's in agreement to ask questions about, since they're all tied together.
Are we going to vote on them all as one?
No.
Okay, then I'll wait and ask when we go to vote on it.
Further questions for staff? Mr. Preston?
Yep, I've got a couple. One, just a clarification. So in this reduction of building size, the portion that extends out to the circle is the same three floors that it was originally, and then originally four and five were recessed, kind of back a little bit off the circle, but now it'll just be four that's recessed back to where the closest to the circle will still be the same number of floors as was originally proposed. Is that right?
I believe so, if I understand your question correctly. And we don't have page numbers. I'll hold it up, but that does, this elevation does reflect the three stories up... does reflect the three stories up, and then the fourth being stepped back a little bit from the circle.
Yeah. And the original design still had the three stories up and then just four and five recessed rather than the fourth. Yep. Great. And then a second question, it talks about the, with incorporating the mural, the need to move the building a foot and a half or so, which leaves our sidewalk along that stretch of East Beaufort at about six and a half feet wide. How does that width compared to any other sidewalk space in Uptown? I mean, is that something that will be, will that be noticeably felt as narrower during that stretch? Or are there other stretches of sidewalk in Uptown, you know, the walkable area, that would be comparable to a 6.5 width rather than presumably eight, I assume, so what it was originally?
I will have to have staff jump in and explain if there's other locations that would be comparable to the six or six and a half feet wide. I will say obviously, the properties to the east of this development will have a wider sidewalk, so in this area, we would not have any kind of cafe seating or anything like that to take up space on the sidewalk. I'm going to turn around and see if I can find Mr. Otto or Mr. Trummel or see if anyone knows the width of the sidewalks in Uptown.
Yeah, sorry, not that I expect staff to be out there with a tape measure, you know, keep track of it.
Well, he probably knows, so that's the thing.
Sidewalk widths vary throughout the Uptown. I think six and a half feet would be a fairly narrow area. What we see, though, is that we have areas where there are cafe seating or allowed, areas where there's advertisements, things like that, that essentially narrow the sidewalks. So this would just be a short stretch. Obviously, we would not be able to allow those uses in this area, though.
How, if you know the answer, how wide are we on either, like, what would be the comparable side right off the front of one Uptown circle? Like through the going down north or Beaufort on either side of that?
I'm sorry, I don't know the answer to that off the top of my head.
I think the cogent issue here is the fact that it will be handicapped accessible under code.
Yeah.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yeah, I was just going to ask that, but I think we just answered it. It will be accessible, handicap accessible, and meets code compliant. Okay. And then we will obviously restrict the use of it because of the width.
Correct.
Perfect. So just want to summarize what I think I heard. So we are saving the mural?
Correct.
We're reducing the potential TIF amount?
Correct.
And we're reducing the town's investment?
Where, what was the last words?
We're, we're reducing the town's investment. Did I hear that, or did I not hear that?
Well, we are still obligated to underground the utilities in the alley. So in terms of reducing the town's investment...
I think what he's referring to...
We're reducing the number of parking spaces that we've committed to, yes.
That's what I meant to say. I said investment, I meant parking. Sorry. Yes, so we're reducing the town's commitment of parking spaces. Sorry, I apologize. Okay, just want to make sure. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Smith?
And when we're talking about the parking location, the College Hill is the one that is directly across from the Heartland Bank, and Amtrak customers use the top floor. That's the parking garage that's envisioned for these tenants.
Right, so that's where we will commit to have 100 spaces dedicated to this development. Will be in that deck. It's the one that's between Mulberry and College Avenue. We refer to that as the College Avenue deck. The other 100 spaces we've committed to be within 1,000 feet.
Now, when you, when you say you've committed, will there be signs that say you can only park here if, if you're doing business in Trail East? Or will it simply be an expectation that we have those spaces available for them?
Generally, the, the parking space, their, their customers will be generally using the parking spaces on their site. So the dedicated parking often is for their tenants and their, you know, their residential tenants as well. So the employees of the businesses that occupy the space. So in the College Avenue deck, we have some committed spaces. I don't believe we designate those for Heartland Bank or Fire and Earth or Normal Public Library specifically. I think it's just open parking. They just get so many passes.
Okay, so would we handle this the same way?
I, I would assume so, but we haven't yet figured out how those spaces will be dedicated. And, and you are accurate in terms of the fourth floor, the top level of the College Avenue deck is where we do allow long-term Amtrak customers to park for free.
Okay. And, and then in terms of the access to the mural, it's a two-story mural, which I am assuming that they've incorporated into their design. Will that be visible and will the public have access to that, or only if they have business with that first-floor tenant?
You know, I, I'm not sure I can answer that question. There might be a developer question. I'm not sure if you'll be able to see it from the exterior. You know, if you're walking past, my guess is if there's windows you can see in, but if you want to stand in front of it to take a picture, you'd have to go inside the business.
Okay, thanks.
Discussion.
We got another question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Would you like to go first, since I'm already gone? Is there any assurance that the mural will be kept maintained and it won't be painted over or removed if it turns out it's in the way in the future?
It would be the developer's property.
Yeah, the same laws that would apply originally to us under the federal copyright statutes would apply to the owners here. So it would be the same, they'd have the same legal obligations that any art owner would have.
Okay, so for somebody that's not an attorney, can taxpayers be assured that the mural is going to stay intact and not be painted over or removed at some point?
They've got a responsibility to the artist for not destroying the mural. That's what the legal requirement is for them.
If I understand correctly, the town is going to have no more authority over the mural if we pass this. It'll then be up to the artists if they want to take legal action to ensure that it's not painted over or, you know, later removed.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Lawrence?
Quick question for staff on surface parking. Remind me what, if anything, will be in the back surface lot? I mean, there's like, I don't know, 75 spaces there now or so? I have, I might have that. But what's going to be available and what would be its use? Oh, Mr. Trummel, right here.
Yeah, on the existing, or I'm, I'm sorry, on the new site as it's developed, there's 36 spaces that will be on the backside. I guess I'll call the east side of the, of the new, new construction. Now, 10 of those are, are committed to by a previous agreement to an adjacent landowner, but there'll be 26 spaces that will be available to the Bush Development customer base, for lack of a better word.
Okay, okay. And that is reducing it by what's, what's there now?
There's about 115 spaces there now.
Okay, okay. But there will still be some surface parking, albeit less, but nevertheless, some. Okay. Wanted to just clarify that. Thanks.
Discussion on this item? Mr. Nord?
A couple of things that concern me with this change. The town is now giving up all control of the mural. We had a petition of over 5,000 people that said they wanted the mural saved. By approving this, we no longer have control over the mural. You know, it can be demolished immediately. That concerns me. That's, that's a big concern. Another concern is we don't know where people are going to park. The people that currently come here to enjoy the area. We're giving away a lot of parking, 200 spaces. We don't know how many spaces are still available. So that concerns me as well. Another piece is, rather than looking for another tenant, business tenant, we're removing a floor. So, you know, in my mind, that tells the, that, that tells me that the developer's feeling is that it's going to be too hard to find another business tenant to move in. This council, we have talked about at our 2019 planning session, trying to get out of one Uptown. And then the council has said many a times, lots of folks here, not everyone, that there's not enough demand for business spaces to even consider moving out of one Uptown. We have vacant, other vacant space in Uptown Normal. We've got restaurant space that's vacant, that people could move into right now. You know, if somebody wants to do this food, this food place, there's places already here that are vacant. So I'm not seeing, I'm not seeing the reason for taxpayers to subsidize this. And we're also subsidizing more high-end apartments, which I disagree with that. If we're going to subsidize housing, you know, it should be folks that truly need it, not like what we did before, $4,200 a month apartments. If you can afford $4,200 a month, I don't think taxpayers need to be a part of subsidizing that. So for those, I just don't see the fiscal growth to the community for this. The business that's coming in, they're already in the community. So I don't see, I don't see the overwhelming benefit to the community for this incentive. You know, if the developer wants to do it, I'm all for the developer wanting to do this, just not with taxpayer dollars. And at the cost of giving up control of the, of the, of the mural, because that was a big issue for this community. It's something that brought the community together, and we're giving it away. Thank you.
Mr. Nord, I have to correct a couple of things that you said there, in the sense that, the first thing, there was a national moveon.org survey to save the mural, petition, if you will. But if you go back and look at the tenants of that petition, they were erroneous. What they were asking for was not what was in reality happening at that site. And Mr. Day, I think you can weigh in on this. There has never been an obligation, as a result of the federal lawsuit, that we maintain the mural. The obligation was that we move it in all best faith interests and relocate it so it is not destroyed. But there's no, there's no maintenance piece of that decision. Is that correct?
That is correct. And actually, by moving the mural interior, because you've got a much better chance of preserving it than it would, we would have had had we moved it. It's painted on a wall that was meant to be an interior wall when we demolished the building that was next to it. The wall wasn't actually prepped when they painted it, and the paint that they used is not going to last forever. There's already tuck pointing issues and other issues that will only get worse if the, if that wall stays an exterior wall. So we're actually preserving or helping preserve the mural to last longer by moving it to the interior than it would be if it remained where it was or was moved to some other exterior location.
Thank you. And I would rebut what you said about $4,200 rents. We have no idea what the rent structure of that apartment is, and for you to use that as an example on this project is not fair to the developer. Mr. Preston?
Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, there are actually a couple other things that I want to kind of pick up on that you, I think, Mayor, started getting into as well. Talking about the parking, I want to remind everybody that we are talking about a Second Amendment to this redevelopment agreement, not the original redevelopment agreement. And 200 parking spots was highlighted, which is a reduction from the 300 that we were at before. So in fact, we're saving 100 parking spots that will not be allocated to this project as is the case currently until this Second Amendment is passed. So I think that's a positive. I also look at the mural, Mayor, probably like you do, that, that is something that I think I probably underestimated how much sentimental value that mural had when this whole project initially came up. But the fact that developers incorporating that into their space and the interior, and as I understand it, that first floor that, where the mural wall will be, I believe is a retail space that will be open to the public rather than being a private office or, you know, residence or anything else, that it will be a place that people can enjoy it. We know the mural has the best chance of staying intact when it's staying exactly where it is rather than us trying to remove it. So I think there are a tremendous amount of wins in this project, and our max TIF contribution is being reduced by about 2.4, a little over $2.4 million potentially with the reduction in the size and scope of the project. That overall, I think that this Second Amendment has a lot of wins in it, none greater perhaps than the fact that it gets the project moving forward in a way that is successful for the private developer and the private businesses that are looking forward to going in there, and in a way that enhances Uptown and saves us some money, saves the mural, and saves some parking for everybody else.
Ms. Cummings?
Can everyone hear me now? Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. And I guess I'm kind of, you were reading my mind this evening, Mr. Preston. Actually, though, I will, I'm going to start with the mural and say I think it, it's a great thing that I felt like the developers felt the sentiment of the community and decided to figure out a way to incorporate it. So I want to commend you and thank you for that. And so I'll start there with that. One thing I do want to highlight that kind of, I don't know, made me blink my eyes an extra couple of times. It is not our place to get in the business of the developer and the businesses in which they choose to connect with. And for whatever reason, you all made the decisions you made. You know your business, you know your finance, you know everything that you need to know about what you want to accomplish. And so I, for those watching, I want that to be clear. That's not our job. Our job is not to get into their business. And so whatever decisions they made, they felt it was what's best for their project and what they wanted to invest in our community. And so I thank you for being, you know, whatever decision you made, I'm hoping and believing that it was a wise one for whatever reason. And I, you know, we may only know a portion of it, but you know the greater details and have made a decision that would be beneficial to us. What we do get out of it is some of the other things that Councilmember Preston has spoke of. The other thing that I kind of want to make sure that we make clear tonight and stop just throwing language out is we're talking about a TIF that's already in place. We've already voted to extend it. This is federally recognized but state-regulated. And so what they're receiving is based off of a criteria not at the town level. It's at the state level because it's a TIF. So I want people to be very clear on some of the things that you're hearing and making sure you understand. More so for me, I'm so excited to see this, and I'm hoping, and I'm looking at those of you who are part of the development group, that the date that I saw for groundbreaking is going to actually happen. I think it's been long awaited. I know COVID has thrown some things behind, but to keep us moving and to keep the, the development going forward, I think is a great thing. I'm excited to see everything when it's completed and looking forward to what it will bring more, how much more it will bring to our community. Thank you.
Mr. McCarthy?
Thanks, Mayor. I want to echo those sentiments. Looking forward to October 15th and whatever that celebration looks like, but I'm looking forward to that very much so. I agree with some of the sentiments that have been shared here tonight. My questions, if they weren't apparent, were to highlight the fact that basically the town's commitment is reduced significantly in the Second Amendment, which I think is a win. a win. And we have a business that still thinks there's a valuable investment and they still want to build something in our Uptown even though we're committing less to the project, I think. You really got to squint hard, turn around backwards, do a backflip to try to see that there's some negative here. I think it's a great project. As to the community benefits, just a couple off the top of my head, is that there's at least one entrepreneurial business that's coming here. So that's a new business with new sales tax revenue that but for this project wouldn't exist. There's also a new building that equals new building value, which equals new property tax, which but for this project wouldn't exist. Now, forget all the other businesses and tenants that will be there, like new housing stock for, let's say we had an electric vehicle company that would maybe be hiring upwards of 3,000 to 4,000 people and need this type of housing. Let's say that was important to the community. That was also a benefit. Those are just off the top of my head. But I think the important, among many important things, but one of the important things when we throw around the term incentive loosely, is that TIF, as my colleague, Ms. Cummings, mentioned, is that revenue comes from the value that this project creates. The building gets built, new value is created, the property tax from that is part of what we're giving back. But for the project, there would be no revenue to the town, there would be no ability to do this incentive. I think that's a key thing that's missing here, that the incentive comes from the project itself. Any sales tax revenue comes from the success of that business with inside this project. I think we lose sight of that when we start slinging around terms like incentive, as if we're asking the taxpayers to open up their individual checksbook and write a check to Bush Construction. That's not how it works. I think it's really important. I personally am very excited. Also, we've got a new opportunity for ISU and a developing entrepreneurial center. Again, another great community asset to help existing folks that are minded in that way in the building. We've talked about this project. We've debated about this project. We voted on this project. We've struggled through a pandemic with this project. I am just so darn excited to just watch it get off the ground and get going, very much so. So I'm enthusiastically supporting this. I'm enthusiastic, looking forward to October 15th timeline. And let me know when the ribbon cutting is too, because I'll be there with bells on, excited to see it happen in our Uptown. That's all for now, Mayor. Thanks.
Ms. Lorenz.
Yeah, thank you. I kind of been listening here to some of the arguments and rationale. And I think to Mr. Nord, some of his statements, I think, I think, you know, you're kind of getting at the goodness or badness of TIF, Tax Incremental Financing Districts. And, you know, you can debate that, but we have the TIF, so we're really not debating should we or should we not have the TIF. It's here. So it's working the way TIFs are meant to. You might not like them, and I think that's kind of the genesis of your argument about, you know, doing this and incentivizing, and some of your other words, subsidizing and so forth. It's a TIF, it's acting the way it should be, it's accelerating productivity into land that otherwise would not develop at the pace that it's been developed. And I think Uptown here to four has shown the productivity of our TIF policy. So, you know, you could be for or against it. Sounds like you're against it, you know, so be it. The TIF is here. I think we welcome a developer that's looking to work with us with that tool, that economic development tool of a TIF. I don't agree that we, as government, should get involved with telling a developer how many floors they should build. I'm going to leave that up to you guys, that you know the market, especially now post-pandemic in terms of commercial space. So I think as a government entity, we cede control to capitalism and allow the private developer to determine the best footprint. I too want to applaud your creative thinking on a way to incorporate the mural, because like Mr. Preston said, that really did strike a nerve in our community. And so lucky be the tenant that has that as their interior wall, right? So the other place that, speaking of the mural, that I don't think government needs to get involved in is maintaining control over art. So I think that we allow the business to buy the building, preserve it. They will have to follow the laws, the federal statutes, and I'm sure that you are versed on that. If not, I'm, you know, I'm sure you are getting versed on it, that, you know, you understand and your legal counsel understand the concerns of what the artists have invested in that and will act according to the law. So again, I'm not going to tell you that you need to follow the law because I think you know to do that. So, you know, just trying to peel apart what's our role and what's not our role. The last statement I want to say is about parking. You know, two weeks ago, I think it was now, we passed on a six to one vote, the need to do a parking study. Now oddly, you didn't think it was time to do it. I think today's item actually shows the timing is ripe, that if this development is happening as it is, the time is more than right for us to study what the parking situation is. I feel comfortable that if two years ago, we thought 300 was doable and now we're reducing that, like Mr. Preston, I think has already said that, that, you know, we're going in the down direction, not the up. So I feel comfortable about that. So I think some of the arguments presented here tonight, you know, really leave me feeling like this is, this is positive for our community. Mr. McCarthy mentioned a whole lot of community benefit. Let's not forget the good old foot traffic for existing retailers and those who want to be in this space. I think they will all welcome having, you know, new tenants and new residents in the area within walking distance. So I think that's great. My last question, and if I can, direct this to the developer or staff, whoever feels best to answer this, I just have to ask this question. Will this really happen? And I guess I asked that question, maybe it's, can you give me assurances that this will happen? Because it hasn't happened for a long time. And how do we know that it's really going to happen? And I know that seems maybe like a crazy question, but once upon a time here, we did have a project that we started and then it stopped. And then it became a big hole in the ground. And we don't want that to happen again. So what assurances do we have to know that this is really going to happen this time?
There's a couple of points I could raise on that. First is, I mean, the slowdown that we've seen so far has been the developer waiting for the federal government to issue the new market tax credits. That got issued this summer. And so we've been waiting on both the federal and the state government for quite some time to fulfill the funding obligations. In terms of the hole in the ground situation, before we close, there's a provision in the underlying development agreement that they have to provide us with sufficient financial data before we close on the property and give it to them, that they've got the resources necessary to complete the project.
Perfect. That's a great answer. Thank you.
I'll just add to that, that if you have a clear understanding of the process and the ins and outs of new market tax credits, you have a very lucrative career ahead of you, because it's unbelievably complicated. Ms. Smith.
A number of points have already been made, so I will try to restrict myself to some items that might be new. To address the concern about the maintenance of the mural, I really am trusting that a developer that has spent the money to keep that wall standing would not do that and then allow it to fall into disrepair. So that does require a certain element of trust. I've learned to live with that. I've been disappointed at times, but I think I'm a happier person to trust people to come through than to automatically assume the worst. In terms of housing, the statement has been made about Rivian ramping up their employment. To see evidence of that, you only have to look at the paper on Fridays that used to run a free standing circular with houses listed, and it's down now to one page. And if you look, they're not in Normal, they're in surrounding communities. So housing is at a premium. And while they're not single-family homes, I think there is more of a need for housing options. And so I applaud the inclusion of apartments in this. And also, I can pass along that ISU has succeeded in staying close to enrollment figures from prior years. So, and we have our student population back, and I commend the timing of this, where it was factored in that circumstances made obvious through the pandemic experience that some businesses were rethinking their model and whether or not they needed separate space. I think it's a wise developer that factors that in and recognizes that and adjusts it before they knock down anything or dig a hole. So I think this is a smart move, and I'm more than pleased about the mural because it was one of the things I spoke out in favor of before I joined the council. And I actually would have liked to have seen all the facades, but I'm not one to throw the baby out with the bathwater. So I appreciate this concession to preserving something that is important to so many of our community. Thank you.
Further on the item? Please call the roll.
Mr. Nord?
No.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Cummings?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mayor Kuss?
Aye. The ordinance is approved. Item nine is an ordinance. I timed that pretty well, didn't I?
That's your bedtime alarm.
An ordinance conditionally vacating an alley behind properties located on East Buford Street.
With approval.
Okay. Discussion on this item. Ms. Smith and then Mr. Nord.
I just have a question. If Mr. Day could repeat what it really means to vacate this alley and what this entails and if there's anything that the town is losing in the process.
Sure. And I do want to be clear, just upfront, there is one text change that we will have to make to the ordinance. We have kind of a chicken and the egg situation going on here. What we'll do in section two of the ordinance, where we say that the property will go to Bush or its affiliates, if you approve the final plat tonight, that will change the property owner of Lot One of the Trail East subdivision. So just identifying it by the legal description number rather than the name of the person. So to vacate a street or alley, the Illinois Municipal Code sets out the procedures for how that happens. There's two ways. Generally, when we vacate a street or alley, we just vacate it and it gets split down the middle and each side, each half goes to the adjoining property owners. There is a special provision for situations where you want the entire vacation to go to one adjoining property owner, which is what we're doing in this case. In that case, they pay compensation to the municipality for the entire easement or the entire vacation, vacated property. So that's what we're doing in this case. Typically, we typically, we don't charge for vacations unless it's all going to one. When I say typically, we're, we don't ever, because it's not allowed under the statute unless we're transferring all to a single property.
Mr. Day, can you get on the microphone? You're a little far away.
Now, I've lost my train of thought.
Typically.
Typically. So yeah, when we're just dividing it up between property owners, we don't charge. We only charge for if it's all going to a single adjoining property owner. When we get an easement, usually that is a dedication and a plat, so it's not something that we've paid, that the town has paid for upfront. It's usually something that's dedicated. When a plat comes in, the developer will dedicate certain right of ways to the town. And then when we vacate it, it goes back to the property owners. Did that answer your question? I thought that was a little rambly.
Thank you. Mr. Nord?
Kind of segues into my questions on this. So we just had a vacation here two weeks ago. And with that, the property all went to one owner as well. This, we've got owners on both sides. The folks that are not getting the land, are they being compensated?
They're not in the, to the extent that, not monetarily, no. This will all turn into access easements, so they will get actually increased access to their property more than what they had prior to if we just left this as an alley.
Have they been notified that this is happening or are they all on board? They've all signed off on this?
The law doesn't require a sign off, other than the meeting publication that we typically do.
Okay. And that's happened?
Yes, we did publish this meeting.
Okay.
In accordance with the Open Meetings Act.
Because my concern is, is this didn't have a public hearing. I know Bloomington just had a vacation of an alley and they had a public hearing. I had gone back to look to see if the town did public hearings. And in 2018, we did one where, actually, by chance, it's very similar. And you had wrote this, I believe, yeah, prepared by Brian Day. Says the town may direct title to the property vest and specific neighboring landowner, and the town may condition the vacation upon compensation payments, which we were putting it all to one particular receiver. But the vacation ordinance must be passed after a public hearing and a vote by at least six trustees. That same night, before the council meeting, there was a public hearing that happened. My concern isn't as much with vacating this as are we following the process? Because I don't want to put the town in some sort of hot water because of some property rights issue because we didn't follow this public hearing. So could you kind of speak to that as to why it's different?
The bottom line is I'm a much smarter lawyer in 2020 than I was in 2018. Under, it's section 11-91-1 of the Illinois Municipal Code, sets out the procedure where the public hearing and notice is required in a specific situation, and that is where we are vacating property that is outside of the jurisdiction of the municipality, outside of our borders. There are certain situations where we can take control of streets by agreement, either from the county, the state, outside of the municipal borders. And when we do that, then we have to have that public hearing and special notice according to that statute. And I think the reason for that is because people who don't live in the town probably aren't paying, probably aren't paying attention to our meeting notices, which is why that requirement is there. But if the property is within our municipal jurisdiction, the statute does not require the separate notice and public hearing.
And that's the same rule that Bloomington has to follow? Because they just did this like two weeks ago. I think it was the same night that we did ours.
Yeah, I mean, the statute requires it for extrajudicial vacations, extrajurisdictional vacations, excuse me.
Because, Mary, it just seems odd, because I believe theirs was within their municipal limits as well. And they're interpreting it differently. So I just wanted to bring that up. Like I say, I'm not an attorney, just, I looked at it and saw we had two and I had to question it.
Yeah, and we've double-checked the statute and triple-checked it, and we believe our interpretation is correct.
Okay. And the property owners have not asked for compensation?
No.
Okay.
Not to my knowledge.
Yeah. And just to clarify- Yeah, and just to clarify, they're all okay with this? I'm sorry, memory's short.
I don't believe we asked their opinion. I believe we told them this was on your agenda this evening, so.
Are they losing?
They have been notified. If your questions have been notified, the answer is yes.
Well, they have the same access to the back of their property?
As Mr. Day indicated, they will have better access to the back of their property.
Okay. Unrestricted, that's heated written, never have to worry about it.
I think the questions have been answered.
The access easement is in the final plat.
Okay. Thank you.
Further on this item? Please call the roll.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Cummings?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mr. Nord?
Aye.
Mayor Kous?
Aye. The ordinance is approved. Item 10 is an ordinance conditionally vacating easements behind properties located on East Beaufort Street.
Move approval.
Second.
Is our discussion. Please call the roll.
Cummings?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mr. Nord?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Kous?
Aye. That ordinance is approved. Item 11 is an ordinance conditionally vacating the public right-of-way on East Beaufort Street.
Move for approval.
Second.
Thank you. Discussion. Please call the roll.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mr. Nord?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Cummings?
Aye.
Mayor Kous?
Aye. That ordinance is approved, and the sweep-up ordinance here is Item 12, a resolution conditionally approving the Trail East subdivision final plat by expedited process.
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion on this item. Ms. Cummings?
I just have one quick question to Mr. Day, because you mentioned that there had to be some language changes. Is there anything we would have to vote on to make that?
No.
Okay.
Thank you. Mr. Nord?
Thank you. Now that this property's all been put into one big piece, how much are we selling this for? Or did we agree to sell it for?
I'm not sure that there was a price. I would have to go back and look at the original report and the redevelopment agreement. I don't recall, do you? In terms of the dedication of the municipal property?
And, yeah, I believe it was a dedication to the project.
Yeah.
So for like a dollar for no charge?
Yes. Yeah, under the original development agreement.
Okay, and that's not included in the $6 million incentive number?
No, the $6 million is the TIF increment. As the equalized assessed value grows, that's what that dollar amount is.
Okay. Thank you.
Further on the item? Please call the roll.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mr. Nord?
No.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Cummings?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mayor Kous?
Aye. The resolution is approved. That concludes our general orders. We have no new business tonight. We have no public comment following the meeting, so before taking motion for adjournment, comments or concerns. Mr. Preston?
I will be quick. Two things. One, thank you to everyone who, a majority of you, I think are obligated to stay until 10:15 and stay awake. We appreciate you guys being here. But number two, most importantly, wanted to welcome back ISU students, as today is the first, was the first day, it's still Monday, right? It was the first day of classes for the school year. They always bring an energy and enthusiasm to Normal, and I'm glad that our students are back, though I will probably take a couple of weeks off following the COVID numbers in McLean County, as I think that will probably trend, if last year was any indication, trend in a way that's reflection, reflective of the students being back.
Are you still on the Alumni Association?
I am.
Well done for your job there. Thank you, Mr. Preston. Mr. McCarthy?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick plug and reminder, we've had some Constitution Trail closures recently, a few in succession. I get questions about all that, all the time. For anybody watching, the town's Facebook page and social media accounts are great indicators of any of that type of work upcoming. Comes out days ahead of time, and so if you're a trail user and that's of a concern, certainly you can call me or email me with questions at any time, as you've been, but also the town's Facebook page is a great resource. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Smith and then Mr. Nord, did you have?
I do, yeah.
In addition to ISU students returning, Unit Five classes start this Wednesday. Please be patient. There has been problems getting sufficient bus drivers. So if you find your student is still waiting around past the time for school to start, do call the transportation office. They will work with you, but I'm asking everybody to be patient and also to be mindful of those buses loading students on our street corners. Thank you.
Mr. Nord?
I have a question. Labor Day?
Microphone.
Labor Day could be our next meeting. Do we meet on Labor Day?
No.
No, your meeting is, your next council meeting, because of the Labor Day holiday, your meeting will be on Tuesday, September 7.
Okay. Then just wanted to remind everybody, there's a Labor Day parade and hopefully you can show up. Thanks.
Here you go. Ms. Lorenz?
Yes, I'd like to thank and just shout out to the Department of Magical Elves, who set up and tear down for the Craft Beer Festival that was here on Saturday. Everything was set up beautifully. I think the community came together. It was a wonderful time, I observed, of students who were here and their families, who had helped them move in perhaps, to have a nice evening. I think we showcased our community really, really well, so kudos to the businesses that put that together, but I know it doesn't come without the Department of Magical Elves, who I think are police, public works, probably facilities.
Parks and Rec?
Parks and Rec, for sure. Yeah, so, cultural arts. There we go. See, so the Department of Magical Elves. Well done, once again. We probably throw in facilities management, too. It's very much a team effort. Yes, it is. So a great time, I think, for so many people that were there, and myself included, really had a nice time, so thank you, seriously.
We forgot administration, too. They handed it.
Well, they're part of the Department of Magical Elves. They know who they are.
Motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mr. Nord?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Cummings?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mayor Kous?
Aye.